Okay, it is 6:30. So I'd like to call this September 19th, 2022, meeting of the Concord Select Board to order, and we'll begin with the consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda with the addition added by Chairman Matt Johnson to the minutes.
So just to clarify, that is, just to note on page eight of the minutes, that after the Christopher Heights topic, that I rejoin the meeting and assume chair, reassume the chair position. So, okay, any other, well, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, town manager's report.
Thank you, and good evening. Last week, we were made aware that Governor Baker signed into law H3731, which is our permanent senior means tax. Senior means tax.
And I sent a celebratory note to the members of the Tax Fairness Committee.
As did I, because I had worked with them.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
It has been a long time coming. We did learn from town council that we would need to send this back to town meeting to go for further approval process or acceptance process, so we expect that we will be using...
Oh, sorry. Thankfully, we appropriated funds at annual town meetings, so we can make this program happen through our workaround, but then we'll have this funded the old way, beginning in fiscal '24. Later this month, we will receive our second installment of ARPA funds. That will mean that we will have 100% of our $5.6 million available to us. We'd like to extend a welcome to Patrol Officer Cory Lopez, who joined the department last week. Officer Lopez previously worked at UMass Lowell. He has both a bachelor's and master's degree in criminal justice. The fire department responded to 94 calls last week. Each year on September 11th, the Rotary Club honors a police officer and firefighter for their service. This year's recipients were firefighter Chris Hunter and Police Sergeant Jeffrey Young. Congratulations to both officers for their heroic actions. On September 15th, the visitor center celebrated its 20th anniversary. I think I mentioned that last week. So that was a great event where we had representation from the town, the business partnership, the chamber, and many residents and staff on hand. This past month, the building inspection office issued 68 building permits, 84 electrical permits, 33 plumbing permits, and 19 gas permits. So a lot of activity there, which is terrific for our building permit receipts. Our natural resources director and CLCT executive director provided weed warrior training. We had a dozen volunteers who participated in this program, which is a Suasco Regional Initiative to train volunteers to become certified leaders for invasive species removal projects on public lands in the Suasco River watershed. We have issued a swim-at-your-own-risk and pet advisory for White Pond, based on most recent water sampling. Water samples will continue to be taken, but we ask that visitors and people who are making use of the pond, that they be aware of the increase in cyanobacterial populations. Planning Board had a very busy meeting on September 13th. They heard three applications, 48Y Fitchburg Turnpike, which is a planned residential development, the middle school project, and the Concord Academy Centennial Arts Project. All three applications are still under review. Planning Board is required to make a recommendation to the ZBA on each of the applications. The 48Y Fitchburg Turnpike project was continued to September 27, and the middle school and Concord Academy projects continued until October 11. All three applications are on the ZBA agenda for October 13. Last Friday was the deadline for submission of fiscal '24 CPC projects. We had 11 projects submitted, totaling about $1.5 million in funding requests, which we expect to be below the available funding for fiscal '24. Porch Fest is September 24, this Saturday at 1:00 p.m., and the unveiling of the Beherel Street mural will precede that at 11:00 a.m. Just a couple of additional announcements. CPW Director Alan Cathcart was a featured guest on WBUR's Morning Edition. There was a link that you could, to click into, to hear his story that highlighted supply chain issues, aging infrastructure, and drought as serious factors impacting municipal water systems. So I think I'll stop there and pause for questions.
Okay, any questions for the town manager?
I have a quick question. Thank you, Carrie. I love your reports. I just have a question about Jero. I'm wondering in the next few weeks if we could have an update on what's happening with Jero.
Sure. Yeah, we are working very closely with the contractor to finish out that project. There are definitely some issues related to the increased cost of materials, and we'll see, we'll see what we can put together. It's a bit of a sensitive negotiation that we're involved in now, but we'll see what we can put together.
Which department in town government is going to be responsible for Jero?
So facility, the facilities director, Ryan Orr, is the primary staff member who is overseeing that project in conjunction with Finance Director Gail Dowd, who is stepping in and helping out with the contract issues. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager? All right, I just have one note on tonight's agenda. Liz Rust has suggested, given the number of questions there were relative to the Christopher Heights topic, that we take the second half of her topic, which was about the current status of affordable units and short-term plan for 10%, and move that to a subsequent meeting, so that we don't potentially delay the other topic, the major topic we have tonight. So if everybody's amenable to that, I'd like to, okay, accept that suggestion. All right. And then also just would like to encourage the public to attend the events in West Concord this weekend. I think it should be quite a good time. And with that, the next topic is one where I have been and will continue to recuse myself, and so we need to appoint a chair pro tem, and so I would propose Terry Ackerman. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and I'll see you at the end of the topic.
Okay.
You're going to be watching?
I'm not supposed to do that.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, thank you, everybody who is here tonight in person and on Zoom, and thank you for everyone who provided lots of great reading material. This select board has been really good at reading all of our material in advance, so I'm in the interest of time. I don't think that we need really a formal presentation on the Christopher Heights, but I do know that, I've heard from several board members, there are quite a few questions and comments, so I'd like to spend most of the time on that tonight. I know Mary Hartman didn't finish with all of her questions at our last meeting, so Mary, if you want to lead off?
Sure, thank you.
Excuse me, may I just interrupt? You know, I'm wondering, since we have so many people online and also in the room who aren't normally here, if it might be helpful just to get, I know we've all read that material, but it still might be helpful to just get a quick update and overview, so that we all are working from that same information. I'm sorry to...
Okay, I just was, you know, I had been thinking about the time limit on this. I'm sure we're going to go over time as it is. What does the board want to hear, a quick overview, or just start with our questions? What do you guys think?
Five minutes.
Five-minute overview?
Everything has been in the meeting materials that were available with our agenda, so anybody who was interested had a chance to look at the, both the informal and the more formal correspondence.
Has anything changed from the last time? It doesn't appear to me that much has changed since the last time we had these conversations.
So, sorry I interrupted. I just, it was, it was just a suggestion.
Yeah, well, I think as we ask questions, feel free to add also in if anything has changed since last time. Why don't we do it that way? Because a little bit has changed. So I know, Mary, you have quite a few questions. I know Henry's got comments, Lyndon, you, so, and I'll go last, so go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. So I read all of your letters, obviously, and it seems like you're certain that this is the best thing for the town, and I'm sure you're aware of the fact that there are many people that don't agree with that. Otherwise, these would have passed easily at town meeting, and they didn't. So I've got a few questions. I think we should shed some light tonight on some of the opposition. So I'm going to start with some questions about the financials. And for those of you that are on the call, we've, I'm looking at a schedule here that was, it's got three columns, and the first column is the financials as of February 2020. This is for the project.
Excuse me, Mary. I'll just say to Chris Carmody, our Zoom meister, this is page 19 that I was telling you about before, if you want to show it on the screen.
Great.
Okay, go ahead.
So there's three columns. The first is the sources and uses of cash for the project in, as of February 2020. The next column is the sources and uses as of July 2022, and this apparently is with the sewer connection. And the third column is July 2022, sources and uses of cash for the project with an onsite sewer. So my first question is, the difference between the two, July 2022, with sewer connection and onsite sewer, the sewer connection is apparently if we have a sewer connection through MCI. Is that correct?
Let's see. Walter, if you want to come up, who would like to come up and answer some of these questions? Lee, Walter, all the people who might be answering. Liz, please come up, take a microphone. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Walter Rohanian, developer and manager of the proposed assisted living community here at Junction Village. In addition, town member, 48 Elm Street, Concord, Mass. So no, it's not the connection into MCI Concord. It would be if the town was obligated or allowed a connection into the sewer system itself, into its current infrastructure.
Which I think we already discussed with Alan Cathcart, and apparently that's not in the plan that the town has.
Whether it's in the plan or not, I'm not sure, but the town might have an obligation to do so, being a 40B project, or the town might find a way to be able to make it work and allow a connection in.
Okay, so it's a million dollars if it's on, if, whether it's a sewer connection or it's an onsite, is what you're short, a million?
No, so right now, you'll see in the two budgets, it would be 1.3 million if we ended up doing our own septic system itself, or it would be a million dollars if it was tied into town sewer, and part of that pays the connection fee into the town, as well as you'll see.
But I thought the amount of money you were asking for was a million.
That's correct.
So why is it a million three if it's the onsite sewer? You're short a million three.
I'm short a million three, but I ended up asking, if you look at the sources page, I asked for an additional $300,000 from the state in hopes that they would award it.
Okay, okay. My second question on this is, in February, I see nothing for sewer. So why is that?
Yep, so what we did is we ended up putting it into Earthworks, and that's where the sewer system was buried at the time.
Where is that on this list?
If you go down into the uses portion, there's a column, I think it's called Earth or SiteWork or something of that nature, and it was part of that.
So why is it Earthworks in 2020, but in other years?
Because we wanted to separate out how much it actually costs to be able to build the system, as obviously it's become extremely expensive to be able to do so. So as to further clarify for the town and also for DHCD, we did it that way.
Okay, so you reclassified things going from February 2020 to July 2022.
Yep, if you also look at, like, for example, a, I think, I think I have in there NDC syndicator fee of $50,000, you'll see that there is $0 allocated in the 2020 budget, and in then the 2022 budget, you'll see 50,000 in there, and then you'll see a reduction in the soft, in the contingency budget.
Okay.
So there are some, you know, further clarifications as the budget goes along, that you can appropriately place things into different line items, correct?
Okay. I'd like to talk for a minute about, when you came to the town for the TIF agreement, I think you mentioned that in order to get the TIF, you had to, I think, put in 30 jobs in, right?
Yep.
30 jobs, is that correct, 30?
Correct.
Around 30, okay. And is one of those jobs a marketing professional?
Correct.
Okay, so in the financials, I noticed that you've got $800,000 for marketing, and you've got, but what's that for? Who gets that money?
So that is, actually keeps your, so we call it marketing rent-up. It basically covers your operational losses during opening. So what happens, Mrs. Hartman, is we open with the executive director, the executive chef, the marketing person, all the staff that are there, that you don't reduce those hours because you have the first five residents that moved in. So to fill this project from zero to 83 residents will probably take close to two years.
So it's a startup cost, basically?
Correct.
But it's an operating cost?
It's an operating cost, correct.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why is it in the project cost if it's an operating cost?
It's part of the capital budget. It's money that they use for, they call it marketing rent-up losses, and all capital budgets are going to have some sort of funds in there to help support the project while it's opening. It's not a stabilized occupancy budget.
What about the million dollars in operating reserves?
Sure, so that's basically like an insurance policy for the facility itself, so if something happens, you know, either during rent-up or post-stabilization, and you have dramatic losses, the money's tapped in there. It's, it allows the syndicator, the tax credit investor, as well as the bank, to know that there are funds available to it, should it need it. Almost every project's going to have some sort of reserve. Obviously, this one has quite a large reserve, but this one also has quite a large expense. It has a significant amount of labor costs that are included in the budget itself when you're taking care of this many people.
So who gets the million dollars?
The money stays with the project.
It's never spent?
It stays on the balance sheet as long as the tax credit investors in the project, which is, you know, 15 years. And then after that, it could actually go into a, like a capital restructure of the project. So if you want to do new carpeting, if you have to do new siding, repave the driveway, so there is opportunity to be able to use some of that if you want to at a later date, but it wouldn't be touched for the first 15 years.
So it's just held in a reserve?
Correct.
And the 800, I'm going to go back to the 800,000.
Sure.
So is that spent on marketing?
Yeah, that's all, that's all, that's spent on marketing, paying your invoices for food, paying your housekeeping supplies, paying your labor for your staff.
It's spent by Grantham.
Not Grantham, no, it's spent by the project.
Okay, but the project is being managed by Grantham?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is that it looks to me like there's about $1.8 million in operating money that's being part of the capital, the project.
Correct.
That in fact is, you could call it almost a subsidy to the operations, the startup operations of the...
Correct.
Okay. Okay, let me see. Are there any features in, this building is not fossil fuel-free?
No, it's not.
Does it have any design features that make it sustainable?
Sure, so it is, just to, by way of understanding a little bit about the other projects that we've built, so the most recent two assisted living communities that I've built, one was LEED-certified silver, one was LEED-certified gold, so, and then our most recent senior housing project was Energy Star certified. So we will be putting in Energy Star compliant, obviously, refrigerators and things of that nature, that, you know, pieces of equipment. In addition to that, it will have high-efficiency boiler systems, I think up to 98%, and then it will also, will use either little or no VOC, which are basically the fumes that are offset by paint and carpet and textiles and things of that nature. So there's continuous air circulation throughout the building itself, so that those are some of the features that it'll have.
Okay. I'm almost done, Terry. For me, the big, the big elephant in the room, obviously, is that we have a memorandum of agreement.
We do.
In fact, we have two.
Yep.
Right, we signed one in 2017 that said that you wouldn't come back asking for more money, and then when we did the TIF, we actually tightened that up a little bit.
Correct.
And we actually said, and I'm going to read this for the record, "The company agrees that whether it is acting as Junction Village ALF Limited Partnership, or as Grantham Group LLC, or as Christopher Heights of Concord at Junction Village, or any other entity that owns or manages the project, it shall not seek any type of additional direct or indirect financial support of any kind from the town for this project." So it appears to me that the town has entered into an agreement with, with you, that we would put up a million dollars in free cash and a further million dollars in CPC funding. And then we agreed a few years later that we would put up 2 million, maximum $2 million in tax relief.
In the TIF, correct.
Right? Based on an agreement that we had with you.
Absolutely.
Right? And we're willing to fulfill our part of that agreement. And for some reason, or for whatever reason, you're not able to fulfill your part of that agreement.
Yeah, unfortunately, the expenses to build these projects are just so high that it doesn't make it feasible.
I understand.
And Ms. Hartman, if it's, and I just, just want to make sure that everyone understands, if this project isn't the right one, I completely get it. I appreciate everything the town has done.
Right.
You, as a finance, is on the finance committee reviewing the project and looking at it, a huge help, and like I said, I know you have a lot invested in it as well. So to me, that means a lot. I could tell at one point it was important to the town, and I think it still is. But if the town decides at the end of this meeting that it's just not, I completely get it, and we can all move forward.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Henry, you have some, oh, hold on one minute, Henry. I think Lee Smith wants to add something.
Thank you. So I'm Lee Smith, I'm the chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation, CHDC. I think it's important for anyone listening to clearly understand that while the developer is here making the requests before you this evening and in previous meetings, this is really a request from the state, from the Department of Community and Housing Development. I believe, Terry, you were on the call with a senior executive from DHCD earlier in the year, where they made clear that there are presently 34 projects across the state that are facing similar budget shortfalls, and they have rescinded prior approvals for these projects for funding on the state level, and directed the developers to reapply, showing a substantial financial, additional financial commitment from each of those representative communities. So this is, I'm not discounting his budget shortfall, which is real, but even if he were able to come up with that money himself, I think the state would still be looking at it very closely and expecting an additional financial commitment from the town. So that's, that's really why we're here.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Henry?
Well, just to follow up on that, I've looked at the development agreement, and it seems like the developer has a legal obligation to complete this project, whether or not we give you more money.
It's, we couldn't, we'd be unable to complete the project, so...
Well, I don't know what you mean by not able. If you sign a contract to perform certain work for a certain price, and it becomes uneconomic for you to do so, you don't just walk away and say, "We're not going to do it."
We'd be walking away and saying, "We're not going to do it," Mr. Dean.
Well, have we sought legal advice on whether this development agreement is enforceable?
CHDC has not investigated that. CHDC has not.
It might be a good idea to do that, because we have, we do have an agreement, and we have relied on this agreement, because we've relied on this to fulfill our 40B housing requirements for some kind, some, some time to come, and the fact that the, and I believe we really do not have an alternative plan to fill, not only supply the housing need, but also to meet the 40B requirement, that if they walk away from this deal, we're, we're put in a difficult position, and I want, and I really think it's important for us to know whether they have the legal right to do that.
I think you're exactly right about this being the only project in the pipeline that could come anywhere close to enabling the town to stay above the 10% on the subsidized housing inventory. I take your point and your question, I'd say that's probably more appropriately directed to town council.
I might, I might offer that I think the agreement also references the state-awarded funds in order to make the project whole, aside from, you know, with the Concord funds, and that that would be part of the agreement, that the state awarded their financing.
But it's, the agreement is not conditioned upon the state awarding actually any funds. It was an assumption, and it was made by, I think, sophisticated business people. These are people who do this all the time, and you know, I don't see that there's an out on this. And I think that it's, we're being asked to put up another million dollars to support this project that we have relied on, and it's just the developer saying, "Well, we need more money, and we'll, and we won't fulfill our obligation unless you give us another million dollars." A million dollars is a lot of money, and I'm not sure that the, you know, we have relied on this project to fulfill the 40B requirement. You know, it wasn't that great a project to begin with, because 83 units of affordable assisted living is not exactly what our housing need is in this town, and it's, and I think that it's really, we pursued it for the regulatory reasons, and I think that we ought to really, I think, push very hard to make it happen, but not by giving another million dollars to it. Because, you know, that million dollars comes from someplace else. It may come from the middle school. It may come from other, and by the way, if this project does not go, not only we have 12 acres that can be developed, and we save $2 million that we've promised to this developer, which has not been paid yet, but I think that at this point in time, I think we need to explore, explore what our legal options are on this.
So Carrie, will you please check with town council about that and see, you know, what the obligation is for the town? Okay, thank you.
And the other, you know, I mean, I think I'll have a lot of other observations on this, but I think that's the key one, as to whether or not we can rely on this going forward, but I think it's also something we need to keep in mind, that even if we give them the million dollars, that doesn't ensure that they will get the money from the state.
Correct.
And it doesn't ensure that the project will go forward for all kinds of reasons, and I think it's important for us to start thinking about Plan B, whatever it is.
Yep.
I don't have a Plan B. We need a Plan B.
Right.
One is that we need more, we need other affordable housing in the pipeline.
Right.
And the other is, I really want to see us explore zoning alternatives to, zoning alternatives to 40B, so that we would be able to provide developers with incentives to develop housing that we need, without having the, almost irrational fear that somebody is going to come along and build a big, you know, swamp in our town. And by the way, there are limitations on what can be done, even under 40B. We can impose conditions on 40B developments. The only limit on the conditions we can impose are those that make it financially unfeasible. And so there are a lot of things that you can do to control the size, the scope, the nature of, even of a 40B project, that really would have some influence on the development, not to mention the fact that we can do our own 40B developments, as we have done in the past. I mean, I did like half a dozen of them for the Housing Authority. They were all done with town land, with state funds, but with 40, in the, under the umbrella of 40B. So I think that we ought to, I've suggested that we actually... So I think that we ought to, I've suggested that we actually engage the services of a zoning consultant, somebody who'd be familiar with 40B and knows enough about zoning to find out, or to make some suggestions about, we can, we can build better incentives for affordable housing development. And I also think that as, as long as we're doing that, not to mention, not to go off track too far, we ought to be looking at potential zoning for the nuclear metal site as well, because that's something we want to control.
Okay.
But anyway.
All right. Let's, thank you, Henry. Interesting ideas. Lee, I'll give you a minute to respond, and then Linda, you might have some comments.
Thanks. So I, I just wanted to clarify that the funds requested have, are available through the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and it's my understanding they voted affirmatively to, to support the request that's, that's before you. They're looking for your support as well before they would move forward on that, so they would not be diverted from another.
Actually, I have a question about that. And, and it says on that page 19 again, which, I'll, I'll get to my questions on that after Linda speaks. But it does have 1.5 million showing for that from Affordable Housing Trust. And I'm trying to figure out, is that including the ARPA contribution that we just put it, put in? No?
That's the state.
That's the state.
The State Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
No, no, the state money is the 7 million.
No, the state has an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's the 1.5 million.
Oh.
So the state money comes in a few different lines.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. So I'll, I'll wait on the rest. I have a number of questions on that whole part of the chart, but I'll, I'll wait and see first.
All the town money is in that line called CPC Trust Town of Concord Funds.
Okay.
So does that expenditure require our consent?
Excuse me?
Does that extend expenditure from the Affordable Housing Trust Funds that we just referred to, is that something requires the consent of the Select Board?
No, that's.
You're asking about the local? You're asking about the local?
About the funds that are just being talked about.
No, no, those are state-awarded.
Okay, what I think we should do then is, let's go through line by line, because there's a lot of confusion. And Linda, if you don't mind waiting a minute, might as well go through this then. So if someone could walk us through this first part, the sources, for example, the first line goes down from 7.2 million, it goes down to 6 million.
So that's the mortgage that would be hosted on the property itself. So we reduced the mortgage, mortgage from 728 to 6029. Basically, it's the operating expenses have dramatically increased since, obviously, post-COVID, and it's what the debt on the project can support.
So you've reduced the mortgage?
Correct.
Because the operating expenses have gone up?
Correct.
And you can't support the higher number anymore?
Correct.
I see. Okay. All right. And then the next one is the 9% federal tax credit equity. Why is that going up from 6.9 to 9 million?
So it's, it's a source from the state to be able to get more funds into the project itself.
Is this?
Help fill the gap.
Is this a DHCD-approved?
Yep. So that's a DHCD, state ARPA funds are DHCD. West Mastro Home Consortium is the local funds that is a consortium with, obviously, the Town of Concord and other towns. That's money that's already been committed to the project.
Right. I have a question about that one. I remember the 485, I don't, I'm not sure I remember it going up to the 655. Is that something that the Select Board voted? We did? Okay. All right, sorry, go ahead, Walter.
And then the CPC Trust and Town of Concord Funds are there. They've already committed to 2 million. The DHCD Home Funds, we've reduced from 825 to zero. And the reason why we reduced them is because we're asking for so much money in the ARPA The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a state-run fund, which we just discussed. So is the Housing Stabilization Fund.
The Housing Stabilization Fund, that's another DHCD?
Correct. They have a whole vegetable soup of funds that are available to them.
So that's the place where it's either 1 million or 1.3, depending on the sewer project?
Correct.
Okay. And then the deferred developer fee, we talked about last time.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then under the uses, down near the bottom, where you're talking about earthwork and wastewater.
Yep.
It says, I think in your memo, Lee, and possibly in some of the others, that the sewer costs have been in the project all along, but I don't see them here in 2020.
They weren't, they were, I, I think I had mentioned they were already put, they were in the site work actual number itself. I did not break it out.
Where is that on here?
Earthwork is 1509.
But then it goes up.
Correct.
1509, and then when up, it goes up to 2.6 million?
Correct.
Why is that?
Just the cost of where construction has gone and.
So the sewer was in the earthwork number?
Correct.
But then it went up to 2.6?
Yep.
I think you mean the wastewater, right? I mean, the sewer was never in the project numbers, the actual connection to sewer.
No, there was, we, what we didn't realize is the extent of the actual piece of equipment that's needed. It's really a 1.3 million dollar piece of equipment to be able to install your own wastewater treatment plant. It's extremely expensive. So in the earthwork number itself, we did have a, an amount dedicated to putting in a septic system, which was far less than that, obviously.
But then you've got another 1.2 for site utilities in FY, in 2022 for, I thought that was for sewer.
So correct. So if you look at the, all the way to the far right, the 12 is for the sewer itself. That's correct.
Okay, so I'm still confused. Where is the sewer in the 2020 number?
It's in the earthwork line item, the 1509.
But why did that go up so much if that number, that new 2.6 number is, does not include other sewer lines you have?
Correct. It's just the cost of where the costs have gone through construction.
Yeah, I agree with Mary. It's a little confusing, I guess. The, the earthwork then went from 0 to 2.6 million?
No, no, the, the earthwork, no, the earthwork also has whatever earthworks needed to get the site basically pad-ready, to be able to build.
So you're saying that the earthwork number in 2020 included what you thought you would also need?
Correct.
To do a septic?
Correct.
Whether it was a connection or a onsite septic?
Correct.
That was a low number.
It was a low number.
Okay. Linda, thanks for your patience.
Fine. You know, and Lee, I did hear your comment that, that it was, and I was also on that phone call, I would say, with DHCD, and I did hear them specifically request the town for additional money, and that they were asking all of the 34 projects that had been asked to reapply to now provide more municipal money. So that clearly was coming from DHCD, and whether or not that, you want to challenge that, that was coming from DHCD. So I do have some questions regarding the budget, if I may. The, the DHCD, you already explained why the home funds under sources of funds was eliminated for the two scenarios under 2023, because of the large amount that you were asking from, from the state ARPA funds. Is there any assurance? I understand that that's the maximum of offered funds that would be available, and is there any assurance that they would award that amount?
No, there is. There's, there's no assurance that they'll award any amount.
Exactly. So I, I guess I'm curious why you didn't ask for the DHCD home funds in addition. And let me just tell you why. Because that gets us close to the million, that additional million that's needed for this project.
Yep. So when they put out the ARPA funds, the hope was that people would be able to use them in lieu of their other soft subsidies that they have available to you, whether it's home fund, whether it's trust funds, whether it's stabilization funds. DHCD is only going to award so many funds to each project, and so you have to be able to pick and choose which ones you think are right for your project. At the end of the day, if we end up applying for 7 million, they might come back and say, Walter, we're only going to give you 6 million, and we're going to throw in the home funds for a million dollars. They really have the ability to be able to move around.
I have seen them do that.
Exactly. What, what, what actual funds you're going to get. I mean, the good news about a project like ours is we qualify for a lot of projects. We have, you know, a good percentage of our units that are dedicated to 30% or less of the area median income, and, you know, a good amount of our units are dedicated to people that are 60% or less in the area of the median income. So we really do qualify for a lot of options.
Okay. The rough carpentry estimate has almost doubled, or at least, yeah. And yet some of the others have, you know, there's varying percentages of escalation.
Yep.
And that seemed to be a particularly high one, as was HVAC.
Yep.
So can you just say a little bit about how these updated estimates were determined?
Sure. So we send them off to the general contractor, who uses comparable projects that he's working on, and knowing when this project would actually close, and he figures out where he thinks the market's going to be based on those projections. And so unfortunately, as you know, rough carpentry is, you know, is going to include wood, let's say. So obviously, everyone knows where that price of something has gone, right? So it's just extremely expensive to be able to build now. And DHCD, who will ultimately, you know, approve this project or not, you know, will compare us to where other projects are in their line items. And so they're really going to kind of gauge whether or not these numbers actually make sense.
Right. And so in terms of your bank financings and so forth, these new updated construction figures have also already been reviewed, is that correct?
They have, they, they do know what the updated construction costs are. They obviously don't know whether or not we have all the funds available to be able to support the project. So they're kind of on hold until we determine, you know, if there's enough funds in the project to make it work.
The reason I'm asking that question is that then there are multiple external entities that are all doing their due diligence in terms of this budget.
Right. You have your tax credit investor, as well as you have your bank as well. So there's really four parties that are involved.
Also on the top of escalation, you know, who's going to be assuming the risk of, you know, if this, if this does go forward, if, if you were awarded the money from the state, who shares the, the potential risk of further escalation of, of cost to build and, you know, cost to build?
Sure. So let's say we get to a closing, and we actually put a shovel in the ground, the developer's responsible for managing all the costs. What we end up doing is we usually sign a guaranteed max price contract with the contractor, so we know where the numbers are going to be at that point. So 98% of the project will be bought, you know, prior to us even getting into the ground.
Okay.
But what about between now and then?
I'm sorry.
Between now and when you put the shovel in the ground, who assumes the risk?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Let's say you go through, and the town awards more money, and DHCD awards more money, and then you go out to bid, and you haven't put a shovel in the ground yet, and now it's 32 million or whatever, then what happens?
Then we determine maybe we don't have the project.
Well, I mean, we can be, it's, it's not just a matter of, can I say, exigencies. The, the agreement is extremely specific.
Okay.
It says, "The developer shall bear or seek funding from sources other than the town for any and all costs of the project, including, but not limited to, construction expenses, site development costs, or soil remediation costs." And then it says later, "The developer agrees not to request any financial support from the town, other than the town funds for the construction development project," which is the $2 million, "that the town is under no obligation to provide any additional financial support." So if the altern, if your costs have gone up, and you cannot live by the agreement that you made, you're suggesting that you will just walk away?
Correct. We don't have a project.
Well, that's disappointing. I mean, because the deal, a deal was made.
And a deal was contingent upon us having the financing in place?
No, it wasn't, not, not contingent upon town financing.
Okay. Let's get back to Linda, I'm sorry.
I just have a couple other questions still on the budget.
Sure.
If I may. And that is, the, early on, page two of the budget, which you probably have memorized at this point, is overhead and profit. And then later on that same second page is the developer overhead and development fee. And if you could just differentiate those for people?
Yep. So that's what the contractor gets. That's their overhead and fee that they get within the project itself. So for them to obviously be able to, to buy the project and to, and to manage it, that's the GC money, the general contractor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which one is the contractor?
Yep. So they have the overhead and profit. That goes to the general contractor.
And, and I'm sorry, but do we know who that is yet?
It wouldn't be determined until we get to a closing, put it out for a competitive bid. In the past, we've used Cutler Construction out of Worcester, we've bought in construction, I think they're out of Edom.
Okay, but it's not Grantham or Christopher Heights, I understand.
No.
All right.
I think that's all the questions I had on the budget.
Carrie, Carrie, can I make another?
Sure.
I, I would like to just clarify something. I know when we were talking about legal counsel, there seems to be an assertion in some of the letters that if this project doesn't go through, then Concord is disqualified from being one of the 10 communities with the fossil fuel ban. And that's actually inconsistent with the counsel that we're getting from our Town Council, which is telling us that, that legislation specifies that the affordable housing, the SHI has to, is going to be as of December 30th, 2020, which is when we, in fact, do meet the threshold. And, and furthermore, that there are other, there are other things that we could do. So.
But there was a further clause in the actual act itself?
Yeah.
That talks about you have to, one year later, I believe it was one year later, you have to be at your 10%. Otherwise, you will be disqualified from being one of the pilot projects. So it's, 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 it's still ambiguous about how that's going to be interpreted. We met the upfront criteria?
Right.
But it's not clear about the.
Right. I think it's ambiguous. I don't think we know yet.
We're not positive, but to say that we're going to lose it is, is not accurate either. Because I think some of the letters have said that we will definitely lose eligibility for the 10 communities, to be one of the 10 communities. So it's not clear that we're going to lose it.
I'm not sure that's being interpreted by other people that way at this point.
That's pretty much.
Well, I think Town Council is, is still investigating. Carrie, do you want to comment?
So I, I would say at this point, it's not clear either, either way. We're not guaranteed to be one of the 10. We're not sure that we meet the qualifications. What we do believe is that we need to wait for the regulations that'll be issued by the DOE R before we'll know for sure whether or not we qualify. And/or would be disqualified when, if this project doesn't go through and, and we fall below the 10% at some point in the future.
But would we get credit for these units if the project is still pending?
No.
No.
These units, you'll get credit for them when, when or if a building permit is issued.
And not until then.
And not until then.
Okay. Are there further questions from board members? Okay. Are there any other developments that have occurred recently that we should know about? Liz, Lee, Walter, or anybody?
I mean, do you think it would be helpful, either Terry or Linda, you were both on the conference call in early September, maybe just kind of highlight who was on the call, what the, you know, what happened with the call, kind of what was stated during the call, maybe some of their thoughts on even, you know, myself as a developer and what we've done in the past? I think that might be helpful for the group.
Yeah, I think Liz had a list that she can, that she included that.
All right, Liz?
Sure. So this is included in the memo from Lee. So as Lee mentioned, DHCD recognized, so this was a call with Kate Racer, who's very senior, who has for decades allocated all the state funds to affordable housing projects in all of Massachusetts. And she took the time to meet with, I think, probably six people of the town for a half an hour, so that was really helpful. And she did recognize that the project's not unique with respect to the cost increases. And she did recognize that the project's not unique with respect to the cost increases. And we've also covered that they are requiring additional local contribution and really something from all the funders of projects. She did note that there was one town that contributed, excuse me, $12 million for 65 units. She wasn't specific about which town, but she was giving us some examples. There was another town that contributed another $3 million and $1 million. So she reiterated that the Grantham Group is a good partner with a proven track record across the state and provides a beneficial product and much-needed affordable assisted living. You know, assisted living was picked from all the types of affordable housing for this site. Family housing was presented and through the select board and planning board and other boards discarded for various reasons. And so the town chose affordable housing as the housing type. And DHCD really underscored that Grantham has done a good job on the other affordable housing that they've worked with. They don't work, one of their criteria for awarding funds is that you've worked with them before. So having a proven track record with DHCD is fairly important. They recognized the value of the TIF to the project and wanted to commend Concord for that, but it doesn't come into play with the construction and development cost estimate. They did also note that Grantham was very reluctant to ask for the town for more money and told DHCD that they weren't going to do that, that there was this agreement in place. And Kate said, "You have to go back to the town." DHCD is really requiring this. And DHCD also looked back 14 years and noted that Concord hadn't produced much affordable housing in partnership with DHCD and made that observation.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to say as well, it wasn't just Kate that was on the phone. She also had four other staff members on the phone as well. So if you think about it, really, the state took a significant amount of resources, people high up within the state itself, to actually come and talk to you all about the project and really where things are going.
Right.
And why things are so different now, pre-COVID as opposed to post-COVID.
Correct. Correct. I thought it was a very informative meeting, yes.
I understand that the state is supportive of this and you've certainly been convincing of that. I guess what I'm concerned about is the town. And I keep going back to the fact that the town, I think four different times, has approved money for this based on an agreement that we thought we had. So if we can no longer honor that agreement, perhaps we should go back to the town and revisit some of the prior approvals that have been made. Because it's changed. It's changed quite a bit. So, you know, that's, that's something that I want to put out there.
So something that has come up recently, even I think probably since this memo was written, is DHCD has issued their notice of funding availability. So they have laid out the dates and the pre-application is due October 27th. So that that's really, the timeline that Lee laid out here, you know, was contemplated at writing the memo, but in fact, it's, it is, it is this timeline.
And if we don't get this money, what happens to this project?
There won't, there won't be one.
Okay. So what does the board want to do?
We've got, do you want to take comments? I don't know if you want comments or not, Terry.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, we've got two questions on Zoom.
Do you want a public comment at this point, or two?
Maybe just very briefly, we have two people whose names, I apologize.
Dory Kehoe and Mark Galis.
And then we have a third person. Okay. I'm going to ask each of you to be extremely brief, because we're way over time already. Dory Kehoe.
Yes, can you hear me now? Dory Kehoe, 51 MacArthur Road. We teach our children to make a promise and then to keep it. We've been promised twice as citizens of Concord that if, that we will not come back to you again for funding. That is now the second time that we've come back for money. The town has been requested to come up with money and still we haven't gotten where we really want to be. So we do need affordable housing. Maybe this isn't the best one for this site. Maybe there are other needs that we can do, but I don't believe that the town should be doing this when they've been promised and people voted with that in mind. Finally, members of Concord, taxpayers of Concord, will have a benefit in this only for the first year, is my understanding is. And so after that, members of Concord whose taxes have gone into this project will not have any benefit. So I strongly believe if we as parents and as community leaders want people to believe what we say, then we must hold those who are coming to the town and asking for something, we must hold them to believe what they say. They have not let up to that. Thank you listening, for listening to me.
Okay. Thank you, Dory. Next, we have Mark Galis and then Pamela Dret.
Thank you, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I just wonder if anyone might be able to determine whether for two or three or four and a half million dollars, how many existing housing units could be bought down to make them affordable without any impact to sewer? Thank you.
Does anyone have a quick way to estimate that, Lee or Liz? Or do we want to get back to Mark with that? Okay, we'll get back to you, Mark. That's a very good question. And our last comment, very briefly, from Pamela Dret.
Pamela Dret, 13 Concord Green. I want to know if you, if the developer is willing and able to revisit the design to actually be all-electric, using heat pump technology, which would also allow cooling, because it is not more expensive and it would be a very big benefit to you in the future for all future projects such as that. And it would change a significant number of town objections to positive, such as myself.
Okay. Walter, do you have a quick answer to that, or do you want to get back?
There's no reason to get back. I don't think it would be any, I don't, I'm rather sure it would be more expensive and the project just wouldn't be able to support it.
That is why you need to get this information.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Pamela.
Are we ready for a motion?
I think we might be ready. Keith, I'll give you one minute, then I think we're ready to wrap things up here.
He's got another comment back there.
Oh, okay.
Keith Bergman, 56 Wyatt Avenue. I'm usually up on the board where it's easier to make a comment, but I'm in person today, chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And first, I want to thank the board for approaching this whole discussion in a thoughtful way, because for the last several months, all of the housing entities convened by the Affordable Housing Trust have tried to grapple with the fact that, does the community understand that if this project, this particular project doesn't go through, we fall below 10%, unless we can figure out another project? And we looked very hard to see if we could piece together from here or there enough projects to get us over where we expect we need to be by next spring, when the federal government will be issuing the next decennial census. And that's when our denominator changes for the calculation of the 10% under 40B. And we predicted, our staff is predicting that we'll fall below. So our question was, is there anything that we can do to resuscitate this project to get it above 10%? And that is fundamentally, it's a policy decision of the town if you want to do it. And that, and that I appreciate, number one, that you get that you need this project to stay above 10% and there are no alternatives. But that if there are reasons why you cannot support that, that's an informed policy decision that, that you all get to make. If you needed the million dollars, there's, the trust fund has $1,080,000 in it. If you don't want us, if you don't want us to spend that, we won't. In fact, we don't think that we can without your policy decision in view of the previous votes of town meeting. So that's why we're looking for your policy direction before we take any binding votes. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, I have one more comment. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
I can't speak, I'm back there.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Will Walsh, and I've been in Concord for over 24 years. And as you can see, I'm a gray hair, so I'm a senior. But I've also been following this project for over six years. And I really understand the thoughtfulness and the incredible interest in the finances. And I'm not going to speak to that or what Keith has said. I'm on the Housing Foundation Board now, but was following this as a private citizen. House and seniors that are going to be in this community by 2030. And I think we need to think seriously about the way we allocate all of our money to schools, to the Council on Aging, to all of these places. And we need to think about our seniors. Yes, Concord will benefit from this project. People like you and me, who aren't going to be able to pay $12,000 or $15,000 for assisted living, but can manage four or five, which is what this project will be for us on a monthly basis. Affordable does not mean, I think that someone used the word slum, which I really resent it, I have to say. These are not slum projects. These are people who are retired educators, retired nurses, retired lawyers, all kinds of people. And I think we really, really need to look at that part of it. And you really need to go and look at these projects. You can't sit behind these desks and make decisions. Unfortunately, it takes time. But this is, you're talking about 80 people, 80 different units, who will be affected by your decision. So I ask you to vote affirmatively.
Thank you very much.
Can I just respond to that? Because the priority of Concord residents to use or to get the benefit of this is very foggy. And if it's the same kind of priority that applies to affordable housing, which means local resident priority is, it's a priority, but it is not the first priority. And the only thing they're offering us is priority during initial rent-up. But in a, in a, in a project like this, there's going to be substantial turnover. And so who the residents may be during the initial rent-up does not determine who the residents are going to be in the long term. So it's a selling point for it, that it is a place for local residents to have affordable assisted living, but it is not likely to be a reality in terms of being available to residents at Concord who want an affordable way to retire.
I mean, based on, and once again, this would be my seventh assisted living, we have six others. The bulk, the majority of the residents come from the town or their loved one lives in the town. They want to bring mom or dad closer. This isn't traditional elderly housing where there's wait lists of 300 people. You don't just wake up one day and say, geez, I'd like to live in an assisted living community, right? So some things happen, some things occurred, you need some help. You need some help with personal care assistance. And, you know, when your mom and your dad need help, hopefully it's in the town that you're in, or at least where your loved one is. And that's where the majority of our residents come from, Mr. Dean.
Okay. So I think we need to wrap up. Is, does anyone on the board want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
And then maybe, I understand all the work that you've done, I really do, and I appreciate that. And I also understand that the town has a variety of needs for affordable housing. I personally would like to see affordable housing that adds something to our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. I would like to see affordable housing that adds something to our economic vitality goals. And I would like to see more family housing. So that's the type of affordable housing that I, this is me as a voter, would like, would be happy to spend money on. And, but as a select board member, I'm going back to the fact that it troubles me that the town voted all these prior authorizations of money based on a, on a agreement that we can no longer keep.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the matter be referred to town council on the issue of the enforceability of the agreement that we have with the developer.
Okay. Speak into the microphone. Henry, can you just speak right into the microphone?
Did you miss that?
I heard it, but I don't think they heard it in the past.
I move that we, that we refer the matter to town council to give us advice on the enforceability of our contract with the developer.
Okay. Well, I've already asked if Carrie would do that, and she said yes. If you want to have a formal motion, we can.
I have made the motion. Because I don't want, I, my, what I would like to do is get that opinion before we take any further action on this matter.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
So you're post, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Then the vote is three to one that we are going to refer this matter to town council to see if the prior MOU is enforceable and get that information. And then I guess you want to continue the discussion after that?
Depending on the advice we get.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any other comment? All right. Thank you to everyone for, this is a very difficult issue for all of us. People have worked really hard on all sides, and there's a lot of energy into this project. So thanks, everybody, for a very informed discussion, and stay tuned, we will see where we go next. Mary, do you want to get Matt?
Where is he?
Matt Johnson.
He's playing solitaire.
Here he comes. Okay.
Golf, I think it was.
So you decided not to make?
So now we're going to move to our next topic, which is the update on the middle school building project. And let's see, we have kind of two different things before us. One is the decision about whether to call a special town meeting, and if so, what would the calendar for that be? But I think one of the most important pieces of context that we would need for that decision is just to get a quick update from our co-chairs and perhaps the OPM about what progress the committee has made since our last meeting. So is there, is there any, do you want to give any update, or should we just jump right into the special town meeting discussion?
Progress on what?
Well, so progress on value engineering.
Okay.
I think that there was another meeting that's been held since the last meeting that we had, right?
Yes, there was. Just really quickly, because I think the most important business before the board tonight is scheduling that special town meeting. We did meet again. We were able to find another 640,000 in the, and the building committee was able to achieve consensus on $640,000 worth of adjustments to the budget and to the building. We have another meeting scheduled. There's about 1.2 million left to be looked at. And Ian, if you could help me with those numbers, which means that if, if we, where we are now, we still have about, I think, $4 million that we would have to cut in order to get to the 1.3, the 3.?
102.8.
The 103, yeah.
I wonder if we could have this in writing going forward?
The big number that we want to get to.
Well, I think that Ian actually has a couple of slides here.
Does everyone know Ian, first of all? Ian Parks with Hill International, in case folks don't know, he's our owner's project manager, has been at a lot of meetings.
Thank you.
And Lorraine Finnigan should be online, she's waving. Hey, Lorraine, recovering from last week, hope you're feeling well. So we asked her to come remotely.
Right, who's from the architect.
Yes.
Sorry, I do this every time. You have to keep yelling at me, apologies. So Lorraine is our architect with SIMMA. So our professionals are with us this evening, in case you don't know. So go ahead, Ian, I just want to make sure everyone knew who you were.
Yeah, so I think there's a slide or two that we could share.
Yeah, let me load it up.
Thank you, Chris.
And I think you could skip the schedule slide. And I think you could skip the schedule slide, because we'll get into that in a little more depth.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
So by way of updates, Pat kind of started walking through, but I'll go through it again here for you, just so it's a little more concrete on, on paper. So first, the first is option A, which is the current cost. So as you know, we went through an estimating phase, a 60% estimate back in.
Come on out, quiet.
30%.
30%, I'm sorry. 30%, 30% estimate. I'm already ahead of myself. So 30% estimate.
On where? 30%? DD? Are you talking, it's 100% DD.
DD.
That's why I'm getting confused. Yeah, okay.
Design development.
You're talking 30% of the overall project. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, we were talking about the 30% construction drawing phase estimate, right? That showed that we were at 107 based upon.
The design development.
Design development, 100%. That's why the 30% is confusing me. It's 100% design development.
Okay. I've always heard it called the 30%, and then we have the 60%, and then the 90%.
Nope. So it's 100% design development, 60% construction documents, 90% construction documents, and then out to bed. Yep, so I was, the 30%.
Where I got this 30% number, but, okay.
So what's the difference between the 30% and the 60%?
No, or the 100% DD.
No, I mean, just conceptually, what's the difference?
They're farther along in the drawings. So design development.
Would we get better numbers? Or this is the 100%?
Yes, it's more detail, more specific to.
Okay.
Yep, there's just more information for the estimators to see.
So that you get, so, because I'm not in the business, and the way I understand it is we're at, at design development, we were at a point where we had put together a picture of what this was all going to look like. And we had some level of detail, and you get estimates at that point. You're at 100% of where you want your project to be. You get some estimates, and those estimates came back, and that's what the, the estimators then rea, gave us the new estimate for, and that's how we got to the 107.2 million.
When you say you're at 100% of what you want the project to be.
It's a design development. Lorraine, since I'm not the professional in the room, you're muted, but if you want to chime in, and you can't unmute. Chris, are you able to unmute?
I can now.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, I couldn't unmute. Yeah. So there's, there's multiple phases of design. There's schematic design. It's actually before we start schematic design, feasibility study, where we study different options, which includes a new building, add reno, new building in different locations, different levels of addition and renovation. From that, we get a preferred option. The preferred option for Concord Middle School was a new building. We then moved into schematic design of a new building and provided multiple options of what that new building could look like during schematic design. We ended schematic design with a preferred image, aesthetic, shape, size, size, square footage, height, location for that project. From there, we went into design development. Design development is really flushing out the details of design. What is the brick? What are the materials? What does the roof look like? What are the profiles? Making sure the adjacencies of the square footage are accurate. How is the site design coordinated with the building? We did additional geotech investigation during that time. It is finishing the design discussions between the architect and the owner as to what this building is going to look, feel, touch, smell, everything like. Contract documents, which is the phase we're in now, is changing that design into bidable drawings, something the general contractor can take and build that project from. We're dimensioning everything. We're detailing everything and coordinating it with the HVAC engineer, the structural engineer. We're writing technical specifications so that they can purchase the products that are needed to build this. So DD is a component of design where there's a lot of decisions about materiality, about what this looks like, about adjacencies. And contract documents is giving the detailed drawings to a builder, preparing the detailed drawings to give to a builder, so he can execute the construction of it. Does that make sense?
Can you correspond that to budget figures? So I'm assuming that the design development was the 100 million? And the contract documents is the number you've got up there, the 107.2?
No, we have not received our contract document estimate at this time. We've only received our design development estimate.
Can somebody help me?
Mary, you set the budget in schematic design.
That was the 100.
And that was what the town voted on? And that's normal where you set the budget?
And design development is.
And then design development further elaborates on, you set a budget, and then you make the decisions within your budget, and you reestimate it. You have, you have more information in the documents. You know, like Lorraine said, there's geotech information that it, it tells the structural engineer more information about what's under the ground. There's just more information that you get and decisions that you make within that budget. And you just, you reestimate it at that point.
Okay, I guess.
That's the number you're looking at.
Maybe the bottom line question is, how did we get from the 100 million that was approved at special town meeting to that 107.2?
So the special town meeting approved the 102.8. And then we went through this construction drawing, you know, documents phase up to, what, we got 100%?
It's the design development, 100%.
And then that was reestimated, because now it's more detailed than schematic design. And of course, some times gone by, and there's been inflation. So, and it was beyond the level of escalation that was included in the budget. So as a result, that number came back. It was, I think it was more like 108 or something, right? 100 and, and then, and then there was a $1.1 million worth of, of value engineering done at that time, got us to this 107.
Okay, so you've already got 1.1 million.
All right, so, and, yes. And then we've now turned the, the crank another time.
Yep.
And gotten another 600 and something. So there's, I think, isn't it?
It's just under 2 million collected.
Option B, I think is what we've been calling it.
I'll brush your teeth.
So the next slide is, I think, this, Chris, if you could forward to the next slide. There we go. 106.5 so far.
Yep, there you go.
But the, the committee is not yet done. They're still meeting, still looking at items. There's still, I don't know, how much is still sort of in suspense?
1.2 is in limbo. 1.2 million is in limbo right now.
So if we could just summarize, how much have we already got in value engineering, and how much is in limbo?
1.1 has been accepted.
Okay.
For the initial change.
Got it.
Then the second step here was 641,000.
600,000.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's part of an ongoing process in which we hope to arrive at another amount of savings for value management. 1.2 left on the table.
Right, and we don't know how much further we're going to get. But right now, we're sitting at this 106.5 number for the so-called, maybe consensus proposal, I think is probably the best word for it.
That's fair, yes.
And so, so now there will be a 60% construction documents estimate. And that will come in October. And that, I think, is a, an even better basis in terms of clarity for what the eventual costs are supposed to be. And we don't know if it's going to be above or below where we are now for that scope. Now, what we're trying to do is finalize the scope that will be sent to the estimators for that 60% estimate that are reasonable. So.
Mary, if I could just say, one of the things that you asked was, how did we get to this bigger number? And it's, it's in part because you have more detail, but the really big driver for this has been escalation and inflation, escalation in the building trades. And that, because you built, we built in escalators.
What was it, 3.5%? I don't have the number on me. 4%?
4%.
That's schematic design.
So early on, you start to build in these cushions, because you don't, you don't, you're really operating with less information than you, you, you know you'll get later. So you build in cushions. But inflation and the, the escalation in the building trades took us way beyond that as it has in every other school building project that's going on. So that's why this is such a big number.
And thank you for bringing that up, because I remember, I remember I had that question. How much of the increase is because of inflation, and how much of it is because some of the design features we had cost more than we originally expected? Or how much of it was because we maybe made some changes to the design?
It's more, to the, to answer that question directly, it has to do with inflation and the cost of materials.
Do we have a schedule that would actually break that out? As far as how much is inflation? How much is because of things cost more than we thought? How much was design changes? Would we have a schedule that shows that?
I think the way, the way that I understand it is that at the time, we estimated when we had those early designs, the estimators were looking at real material costs, real labor costs, real, what it, you know, you're typically pretty close to what it's really going to cost, although you build in these cushions. My understanding of this is it's very little that anything changed. No, it's very much that things changed in the real cost of labor and the real cost of materials, but not because we had more detail in the design.
But there were a couple of examples of new design features added to the building after schematic design that did add to the cost.
There are design, there were design changes.
I think it's worth, so.
The way it works, just to clarify, is that there's a design contingency included in, in the schematic design. And so there's a 10% design contingency plus the escalation at schematic design. And as you add detail to the project, you take money out of the design contingency. You start reducing it. So each iteration of the, of estimating, you reduce the design contingency accordingly, because you're taking details and putting them into the drawings, right? And so the estimators have tangible things that they can say, this is a feature, this is a feature, this is a feature, and they estimate those things, because they have more detail. They didn't have that detail at earlier iterations.
And it comes out of the contingency, the design contingency.
It comes out of the design contingency.
So did we go over the design contingency?
No, but here's what's, we didn't. It's, it's 10%, and typically it goes down.
Okay.
And I think the estimators, with everything, were reluctant to even bring some of those numbers down because of the volatility. Am I wrong, Ian, in the, you were, you sat through the day-long reconciliation, I didn't.
There's certainly a reluctance to reduce any, any sort of escalation projections, you know, because it's, it's trying to predict what's going to happen in the future.
So I want to ask about that escalation, because I was really concerned with one of the slides from last time, and I think some of my colleagues were too, that our square footage cost, these, this was a slide that said current MSBA projects, and our current square footage cost came out 592, which is significantly below all these other towns that were on that slide, Amherst, Maynard, Hingham. Remember that slide?
Yep.
And so I am concerned that additional inflation, you know, that maybe we're in a fantasy that's too low now, or additional inflation will push it up. And an example that I have is that I know that we added 2 million additional contingency, I think it was Matt's idea, in, in the last round, and we've gone through that already too now, that if we hadn't done that, we'd even be further off. So, well, anyway, just how you respond to all that.
I mean, there are other projects that are not necessarily comparable, that are, meaning there may not be a middle school, there might be an elementary school, that are under the 592, was it? I don't know.
No, this is, no, these are middle schools.
Those are, that's what I'm saying. But I'm saying there are other construction projects that are not $700 a square foot.
Okay, yeah, they're not on the list.
But they're just, yeah, for reference, there's so many projects, you can't put them all on one slide. Those, I think, were comparable either in size or number of students. So that was what that pulled together. But that doesn't mean there aren't others that are at 550 a square foot, or that, at 600 a square foot. They just may not be comparable.
There's a big range. When you look at all elementary, middle, and high schools of varying sizes, at the MSBA website, there's a pretty big range.
Their cost data chart is like mind-blowing with all the information on it. So you can certainly go look. They track inflation as far as escalation, cost of construction, right? What they reimburse at, which is $360 a square foot. So do the math on that. So anyway, those were the ones that were comparable in enrollment and, and/or building size.
So maybe we should take a look at the option C, so-called? Because I think that that will kind of lay the table now for why there's a request to have a special town meeting.
So this, this is the option C, which is the back-to-budget cost. So this is cost consistent with what, what was voted on earlier this year in January, February. And so what that would mean to get to option C is significant scope cuts. So right now, we've taken, again, 1.1 million in, in value management. You would need another $4 point million in value management on top of that 1.1 million in order to get back to 2.8. So it's a significant amount of change to the project.
Based on what we know now?
Based on what we know now.
Okay.
And so, and it's redoing some of the work that the committee did last year, and, you know, hearing the, the voice of the public, and right sizing the gym, right sizing the auditorium, that sort of thing. And so what you would have as a result is, you know, going back and, and cutting some of that scope, and, and reducing the size of the gym, reducing the size of the auditorium, and systematically going through the building and looking at other big features. I mean, these, these aren't small-ticket items. These are big-ticket items that you would have to cut to get back to.
And the building would not be net zero ready.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'd started, I started highlighting some of the things.
Because you'd have to cut things, the, the things that were essential to that.
Glazing, you know, changing some of the glazing from triple glazing to double glazing, and you, you start losing efficiencies there in, in windows.
You can't do that, right? Aren't we required to make it net zero?
Well, it's according to the, as town meeting vote, we'd have to have a vote to rescind that, essentially. So.
It's, it's significant, is.
Yeah, so, so the, of course, then, the proposition here is to now go back to a special town meeting and to see if there is a will of the town to add additional funding for the project in order to achieve another option than this back-to-budget option, and to be followed by a town-wide vote. So that, that's the, the idea. Now, I think what was originally proposed was this notion of having multiple options to be put before a special town meeting. But my sense, just as a member of the committee in this last meeting especially, but including the one before it that we've had, is that the committee's members seem to be coming to consensus on really one option, and that while we could throw other things out there, that they really, they don't really have the support of the committee members one way or the other. And so, for example, I don't think that anybody on the committee would say, let's go with option A, everything that we had included back in August. I think that everybody is in alignment that, yes, it makes sense to take some of these value management items. Not all of us agree on all the same ones, but for the most part, I'm surprised at just how many people in each of them.
So Matt, just to clarify, I'm just a little confused. Is there an option B, or there's not?
So the so-called option B would probably be the only thing put before town meeting, I think. I, that's my guess at this point, is that this so-called option B, which is the value engineering that the committee is taking.
Oh, I see.
Add it up together, and coming up with a number, you know, and, and right now, based upon the previous estimate, it's a 106.5. But when we get our next round of estimates, it may change, up or down, depending upon what the 60% estimate comes back as.
And then won't it change again when you get the 90%?
It could potentially change again. Now, I don't know if, if, if our professionals want to make a comment about that. What I've heard is that there's less of a delta usually between a 60 and 90% estimate than between the previous estimates and where we are.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna put this in front of a special town meeting or the regular town meeting, I think that if you really want the voters to make a decision and either endorse or not the plan, we need to put the worst-case number before them. And let them, and not have this creeping incrementalism as the estimates come in. Because I don't want to just see that we have one, we get one request after another as inflation affects what is, what is being built, that I would like to see a number from the building committee, which is their worst case, and a number that they agree that they will stick to come hell or high water. And let the town decide on that worst-case number.
Yeah, so I think what the, what, yeah, so first of all, what the committee has, has voted to request of the select board is that we put a number of 115 million on the warrant, with the idea that at this point, we don't know what those later estimates may say, and that they may be lower, and it might be possible to bring a. may say, and that they may be lower, and it might be possible to bring a motion to special town meeting that is lower based upon more confidence in later estimates. The other thing to note is I think that's the 90% estimate, which is used to go to bid. So if we voted with the knowledge of the 90% estimate, then you would have the confidence that you could bid the project. Now, it doesn't guarantee that bids will come back that will be within that, but that, that is not anything that you could ever control in these projects. Whenever any of these projects is funded, you don't, you have the budget before you have the bids. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely. You said it well.
And you can't bind future town meetings. So we, you can't say that this is the highest you'll ever go because they could always come.
It's, 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 if you will, a moral commitment.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not talking about a legal commitment.
Okay.
But it's important for there to be an understanding about what our parameters are, even if we can't legally enforce them.
Okay.
And to do that, I would like to have a firmer number, which is.
Yeah.
I'm going to the 90%.
So maybe could I then change, change the discussion now to focus on what potential schedules might look like for such a special town meeting under those different kinds of circumstances of, okay, do we wait until we get the 60% estimate to close the warrant? Do we wait till we get the 60% estimate, you know, to hold special town meeting? Do we wait to the 90% estimate before we get the special town meeting? And I actually have four different scenarios that I have done that I could share with the, with the board and the public.
I'm looking at the one that was in the packet.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with something about the timing here, which is we go to special town meeting in December, then we get the 90% estimate, and then we go to the ballot. And what if the number is much higher and we've already voted a lower number at special? And so I'm looking at the dates here. You have a special town meeting proposed for December 13th, the vote January 12th. That one month, I know there'll be a little bit more inflation, but if we could go to the special after we have the 90% number, go to the ballot, even like the day after the special town meeting or whatever. But it seems weird to me that you go to the special, you don't have the 90% yet, and then a couple of weeks later, you have the 90%. We might, the 90% number might invalidate the whole special town meeting and.
Yeah. So could I share the screen, Chris? Could you enable sharing for me? So actually, one of the scenarios is waiting until the 90% estimate for special town meeting. So I can, I can show you what that would look like.
But the, the point is, I don't think we should call the special town meeting until we have the number.
Until after the 90% concern?
Whatever the number is, whatever the number is, I want to have that number before we call the town, special town meeting. And I want that number to go to the FinCom and have them review it and endorse it.
But do you feel, Henry, that it's, what do you think the likelihood is that a special town meeting would be needed to build a building with the scope that the middle school building committee is proposing? Do you think that it's likely that we'll need one?
Need what?
A special town meeting to vote additional funds to build the building that.
You mean after we have, you mean at all?
Yeah.
I was, you're talking about calling a special town meeting.
Right. But I mean, I think it's nearly 100% certain that we would need such a special town meeting if we're to authorize any additional, I mean, that, that the budget is likely to be above the amount that's already been authorized, is what I'm saying.
Yes. And I want that number before we call them.
And why, why is that?
Because I don't want to call a meeting until, until the thought and analysis has gone into coming up with a number, which in fact will, will have meaning to the people who go to that meeting to vote on it because they know, that they actually know what the worst case is going to be. I don't want this thing to go, to come back at $130 million because the costs just keep going up. And I don't want to have to go back over, because every time you go, you say, we just need a few more million, a few more million, a few more million. We're almost there, you know? And the, it becomes difficult to resist the creeping increments if you go bit by bit.
But I guess the difficulty.
It's going to be a hard number to swallow. I want the voters to know what they're going to have to swallow or what potentially they're going to have to swallow. I mean, we're already talking about with the existing cost, increasing the average taxpayer's monthly tax bill by about 100 bucks.
Yeah. Now, so, but Henry.
For 25 years. And that's, that's a tough nut to swallow, even if it doesn't increase.
Henry, I agree with you. And, but I think what Matt's saying is.
Well, here, I'll just say it.
Call the meeting. Call, call the meeting now. And then by the time we get to the meeting, we'll have the real number. Okay.
That's why I think we do, we lose control over it then. We did that back in February. We called the town meeting, but we didn't know, you know, we had, you know, we didn't know when we called the meeting, what, what the, what the amount was going to be.
So when we get the 90% estimate, how long is that estimate good for before you can no longer use it to go out to bid?
I mean, it's still an estimate. And we go out to bid in March or April? It's like a couple of months, March, and get them back in April? So there's, it's, it's longer than a day.
See, because if we wait until we get the 90% to then call special town meeting, we have approximately two months before we have special town meeting. And then we need to wait at least three weeks to have a vote.
No, we don't.
Yes, because of you, Terry, because we now have a new bylaw. We have a new bylaw that says that we have to put out pro-con statements.
That's still a good bylaw.
Terry's law. So it's a good law. It's a good law. But it does mean that it's approximately a 90-day cycle. Okay? And so in a 90-day cycle, you're effectively now, those estimates that you waited to receive before you called the meeting are a quarter year old.
Well, wait a second. They're going out to bid in March or April, but our town meeting is in January. That is 90 days from January to April.
So, yes, but then you, you just got, you just got the decision in 90 days.
Oh, right, right.
You're not going to go to bid that day. Okay? So, so the problem is.
No, you can be ready to go out to bid. But, but anyway, all right.
So I, I think that the question is, do you have time to deliberate? Do you have time to understand and deliberate? And I think there, there are kind of three levels of threshold that you could consider there. One is that you're aware of whether the budget is good for going to a bid when you go to the polls to vote. The next is, or do you know it's good enough when you go to special town meeting? And the third is, when I go to the, to the public hearing. And so each one is a sort of level of knowledge of the threshold that you could depend upon. But if you wait and to even call the meeting until then, you're really adding extra lead time.
But I think that if you're talking about 10, 15 million dollars, you better have time to deliberate.
Well, and I, I think that we do have here, again, our usual decision process of we have a warrant that's open, it closes, we have a public hearing, we have a special town meeting, and then we have a town-wide vote. So it's a very deliberative process.
Slow doesn't mean deliberative.
Well, it's got multiple phases, is what I was getting at.
So Matt, is there a point at which we, you want the select board to have the information of what the cost of waiting is? Because there are consequences in terms of, of cost of, of following that path that Henry is proposing.
Right. Because we have 8% escalation or 15% escalation has been the recent experience.
The scale of things, we're not going to start building for two years anyway. And we can't predict what that's going to be.
No, I think that construction, we begin.
It's like spring.
Yeah. As soon as you bid, like within six weeks, you, you mobilize and you, you put shovels in the ground. Yeah. It's next spring.
In 2023.
2023.
Really?
Yes.
You bid it, they, they sign it and they mobilize. They put trailers on the site and fence it off. That's the start of construction. Yes.
Yeah. I'd be happy to speak to the implications of delaying. If it would be helpful to understand.
Sure.
While Chris pulls that up, can I make two points? One is that every time you go to special town meeting on a school project, it's, it's still unknown. You still have a number that you're hopeful that you can design to. It's just we're in unprecedented times with wars, escalations, and, you know, hopefully the ending of a pandemic. There have been, these are unprecedented times. Like the estimators that have been doing this for 30 years have said it in our meetings publicly. This, they've never seen it like this. So that's one point. The second is, if I may, in the absence of a actual bid number, you typically can use what we call in the industry a not-to-exceed. So that is what we would, I assume, put out to the town that says, this is our worst-case scenario. We're hopeful, we're going to be well below it, and we can't control what the market is doing. We can only control what the building has. So it would be a not-to-exceed number.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, so this, this looks a little complicated at first glance here. But what, what we're trying to do is paint a picture on.
Excuse me. Can, can we get rid of the sidebar? And can you get this bigger?
This is Chris Palmetti.
And also, can I request, can I request in the future, could you guys send these in advance? Because we'd be way more prepared if we can read them, you know, before the meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
So just to talk in terms of, of time, you know, time is, time is money, as we know. And delays to this project would, you know, through our, through our research here is going to impact the schedule and is going to have a cost impact to it. So when we talk about pushing, pushing things out or not making decisions now and waiting to make decisions later, it has an impact that, that I'd hope to carry through here. So what we have coming up in the future is a 60% cost estimate. And the, the decision thereafter is, is really, do we, do we can proceed with the design? How do we proceed with the design and stay on the schedule? And have that, have that design match the budget? So what we're proposing is a parallel path here to proceed with the 90% design and set up a town meeting so that you establish your budget, re-establish your budget. Okay? And without, without doing that, you're really, there's a point in time where your budget and your, your estimate need to align. They have to align before you go out the bid. So that's, that's the goal here, budget alignment with the estimate. So that's kind of the, the first path here and what we would propose to, to get this project to maintain the schedule. Otherwise, we're talking about delays. Okay? So if we're talking about delays, we're talking about stopping the design. We're talking about a two- to three-month schedule impact of, of stopping the design and waiting for decisions to happen. And so it pushes back the school opening. But more importantly, there's a cost impact to it. So we're currently, you know, this market, it's, it's not good. As you know, the construction market, the escalation is high. And we're looking at 0.7% escalation per month. So when you start to equate that to an $85 million project, it's, it's big dollars. And on top of that, it's operating costs for your existing facilities. So in a, in a two- to three-month timeframe, because, because you're taking two schools and you're moving them into a new school, right? And then you're demolishing one of the, one of the old schools. You have the operating cost, the continued operating cost of that school, right? So those things factored into a two-month delay, two-to-three-month delay here is, is a range, cost impact of 1.3 to 1.95 million dollars. Again, it's pretty, pretty significant.
Delaying how long?
That's, that's a two-to-three-month delay.
So why are you using a two-to-three-month delay? Where's that?
I'm just drawing out scenarios.
Oh, okay.
So, so.
I mean, that's the length of the town process, right, for, for coming to it.
To pause the design.
Oh, I see.
To have that.
Yeah. That's, that's the Henry scenario of you wait, you call a meeting, then you go two-to-three months, you know, to, till you come to a decision.
So the, the other, the other thing to consider here too is, you know, you get, you get to a point where we proceed with this special town meeting and we, we put forth a number for a vote and God forbid the vote fails. That kind of puts us in an even worse scenario.
Yeah.
We don't want to be in that scenario. But if that were to happen, then.
But that would be necessary because it is up to the public. I mean, it is up to the voters.
It would be an even more significant impact on cost. So that's where I'm, you're looking at the bottom of the screen, six to nine months delay, which really has an even more cost, cost impact to it. So all things considered with escalation and continued operating cost, and you also have a redesign fee now. So we put a placeholder in for, for the designer to redesign because now at that point, you have to go back and redesign the project and get it back to a budget number. You're looking at 4.5 to 6.5 million dollars worth of cost for delaying. And these are, these are projections, but this is, this is what, what you need to consider during the decision-making process. You know, the, the quicker you're able to make decisions, the quicker you're able to align the budget with the scope and the estimate, the better off you're going to be in the long run.
Well, that's why this whole idea of a parallel process. Now, could I, Chris, now share again?
Yeah, but.
Thanks.
Accelerating the process does not make it cheaper, though. It doesn't reduce the cost. And I think there's a balance, I don't see a balance of the priorities here because you're still talking about, we have a project and then we have, we see what it's going to cost us, instead of saying, we have an amount of money and we have to live within that budget. And that both those priorities are important, and I don't think that they are being properly balanced.
Well, I think that that's why we're trying to pursue this value management process, you know, but it isn't, it isn't getting us to budget. That's, that's what we concluded at the last meeting, which was, we went through enough of the big items that it was clear we weren't going to be able to get back to the budget with the current estimations that we have.
Can I ask a question about that? Just, are there some things that are off the table that can't be value engineered, like the size of classrooms or the size of hallways or the design of the bridge or some of these things not even on the value engineering list?
Yeah, there are things that have not been included because they are considered essential to the educational plan, for example. And then there are things that, for accessibility's sake. And I mean, there are any number of kind of constraints that, and for net zero. So these are the kinds of constraints that we've been working around that have led to kind of this set of items. And again, going through, I think, you know, several hours of this process is in the committee so far and still not concluding it. But can I just quickly show sort of what would be the ramifications of pursuing a special town meeting process?
Sure. But I would really like to start by looking at the special town meeting after we have the 90%.
Okay. So let me show you that scenario too. So let's just start with what if we just said tonight, okay, let's go to open the warrant, special town meeting, okay? What would that look like? Well, this is a very aggressive example of this scenario. I have not vetted this with the town moderator or with town staff, but this is similar to some of the other schedules that we have. So what that would give you is more or less, best case, town-wide vote of on December 20th. You'd have special town meeting November 29th, approximately. So that's kind of where we're at. And you can see what it means is, you'd have the 60% estimate the day before the public hearing. So in other words, no real time to digest it, understand it, anything like that. Okay?
Right.
So now let's look at, okay, what about the 60% estimate approach? So that means we wait until our next select board meeting to open the warrant. It goes for 10 days. By the way, there's a 1974 bylaw that's. By the way, there's a 1974 bylaw that says that you must keep the special town meeting warrant open in Concord for 10 days. It's not true of other places in Massachusetts, but here it is. We post the warrant and the estimate gets done. There's time for the finance committee to meet with the middle school building committee, talk strategy, public hearing, then a week after that, November 3rd. Then the finance committee report. You have to factor in Thanksgiving. And then they send the report out. And the special town meeting would be the 13th, maybe the 15th of December, somewhere in that week. And then the townwide vote would be first or second week of January, the second week probably of January to give time to send out the pro con statements and all that. All right, then the third option is that you wait until you've gotten the 60% estimate before you close the warrant. Okay, so this pushes it out another week. The idea then is you have a chance to put in your warrant language something that's, you know, dealing with whatever you got back in the estimate. And I guess like in the worst case scenario, it's 118 million instead of 115 million, something like this. But in the best case, it's, oh, well, that estimate came in lower. We don't have to ask for 115 million and create a ruckus over that. The problem with this approach is there is no easy way to get to a meeting in December. Basically, if you don't hold special town meeting December 15th, then Hanukkah is right afterwards, then Christmas, then New Year's. So the 15th is the latest you can possibly go. There's only 21 days available to get the finance committee report out. And that's not counting Thanksgiving, and that's very tight. So not sure that this works. And also not sure because you can always make a motion. I mean, unless you were planning to go above 115 million, and I'm not sure that people are really willing to entertain that, you can always make a motion below the 115. So this doesn't really necessarily bias that much. And then the third, the fourth one is you get the 60% estimate. You then open the warrant. You have your meetings and stuff. You post the warrant. And you get the finance committee report. And then we get the 90% estimate and then hold special town meeting. So this is one that Terry's asking for. And then you have the townwide vote in Feb. So, you know, the question that I have for, so I think, just my own feeling, is that the ASAP option is not viable. The 60% before you close the warrant doesn't add that much value and it pushes the schedule. So the two options that I think make the most sense for this are this, be able to do the 60% estimate before the public hearing with ample time to discuss, or the 90%. But I don't know whether the 90% for special town meeting, which has some real appeal, like you were saying, Terry, you could go into special town meeting, you vote on something you know you can go to bid on. But by then, you know, you really are almost at the point of where we're going to bid.
Well, I have a few questions about that. I think we can tighten that up a little bit. I don't know if you need a week and then three more weeks at the end there. But anyway, I think you could still go out to bid in April.
Well, I think it's February is when we go out to bid.
Oh, I thought.
Is Lorraine on the phone?
I thought you said you're going out to bid in March.
I don't actually know the date.
It's a pretty long process, so.
It takes eight weeks usually to, because you have filed sub bids and like you have to do walk rooms.
But we asked for bids with a budget number in hand in Feb.
But Lorraine, can someone unmute Lorraine and ask her?
I thought it was Feb 20th or something.
Okay, I heard them say March or April.
I thought, maybe that's when we get them back.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Come back any.
We complete, yeah, we complete the construction documents the end of February, 27th of February. There's four weeks.
Okay, so my question for Lorraine.
Four weeks for the file sub bids and then another two weeks for the GCs. So six weeks before you get the bids.
So does the 3rd of February give you enough time to get that out by the 20th?
So there's a much bigger elephant in the room with that in that is SMMA going to continue advancing the design? Or are we going to stop and wait for town meeting?
Right.
Because I can't, if it's February 3rd and we're waiting for town meeting, the answer is no, absolutely not.
Does that cost us?
What's the value left on?
Well, it's the time. It's the time.
It delays the project.
Yeah, we need all that time back, all those 90 days, 70 days of design back.
I don't understand that.
I don't either because your 90% isn't coming in until January 6th.
So you have to make a decision to allow us to continue designing to a project that is not on budget.
Right, so basically, we would say, go ahead, continue designing.
Yeah.
We'll pay you for your work regardless of whether we go ahead with the project. That's essentially what we'd have to tell them.
This is what we were told back in January is that the design work would stop if we didn't have the town meeting to authorize the additional funds. But that made no sense because the money wouldn't become available. It doesn't become immediately available after you vote at the town meeting to authorize the bond issue.
No, we already have money that we've authorized to pay for construction documents.
So.
So this phase is already, we've already bonded this phase.
But that doesn't, so that doesn't stop the design process that we don't have an overly town meeting, or it shouldn't.
That's not exactly true. So the building committee needs to authorize the designer at every milestone to continue into the next phase. So we've been authorized to continue to 60% design. Our contract also has a redesign clause. If we're not on budget, we redesign. And that clause has to be waived and you would have to give us permission to continue advancing the design. So it's not a cordoned conclusion that we make that we're going to continue advancing the design. The building committee has to approve that through a vote.
Well, these are just self-imposed limitations.
So I wonder if we could just get some clarification for the board? What does that mean if we said, go ahead, keep designing the building that we want, the building that we asked you to design? And they just keep designing? What's the cost of that?
Well, I guess the cost is if the town doesn't ultimately approve the project at that scope, we have sunk that money. And now we will need to go.
That's always been true, right?
Well, no, because if we tell them, no, you can, you know, we're not authorizing the next phase, then we're holding that in abeyance for a little bit of time. And they're not redesigning and they're not designing. They're just waiting.
But we, look at how much money we've sunk into this already. And if we're not expecting that the town meeting actually may make a decision either yes or no, then if the town meeting votes no on the number or if they vote yes and at the election, they vote no, everything is sunk too, more is sunk. So this number that goes to the town meeting has to be a number that people are willing to vote for. And it has to be the worst case number. And I don't think it's responsible for us to call a town meeting until we know what that number is going to be.
Well, so if you have the vote in January instead of in February, basically, you're not having the designers design at risk for that additional month. In other words, if they said no, we would halt at that point and there would still be a month of that money that we hadn't spent. That's the main difference I see at this point. I think the other option that probably is no longer valid was I think that the goal to hold a meeting ASAP might have given the opportunity to still offer multiple options because we thought, oh, well, if we could get the town's read before the, you know, around the 60% estimate, there'd still be a chance to redesign based upon that. But now I think it's going to be too late. We might as well not have options. We might as well just have the option. And then the main difference is how long does design continue at risk? Or how long do we hold up the project if we're not willing to have the architecture firm design at risk?
Right, that's my question. I don't understand with the 90%, are the designers obligated to go to January 6th no matter what?
No, so again, we could say, you know, to stop and wait until we have resolution on this and then restart.
So the 90% has nothing to do with whether we authorize the design?
That would then, no, well, so the two decisions that we'd have is how long are we willing to go with the designer at risk? And then secondly, how long are we willing to delay the project? Right, so if approaches, if we have the designer go at risk, won't delay the project. As far as I know, they keep us on track.
And that's the only way to get to a 90%. You can't stop the design and still get your 90% estimate. You have to keep going.
Yeah, you don't get to a number.
I think they can give us a drop dead number without having all this information.
You mean, well, the 115 million is the so-called drop dead number so far, I think.
But I do want a drop dead number for the town to vote on. And it may not have to depend on the details of the construction plans. I mean, you can say that this is what we're willing to spend. This is what we're willing to put to the citizens of the town. And either they vote for it or they don't. So I don't think you have to get into great detail. It's really a question, I think, for the voters to decide how much they're willing to spend.
Well, I think that the willingness to spend though is predicated on, well, how, you know, we could put a number of 150 million on the warrant and then we'd probably be pretty well assured that we could build the building. We couldn't necessarily be assured that the public would vote for it, right? And so there's this trade off, right? So the realism of the number, and we want to make sure it's a realistic number. But we want to make sure it's realistic both in the sort of the low as well as the high case, right? That we're not asking for the moon when we don't need it.
For me, and I'm having a hard time even figuring out what's the decision in front of us.
Okay.
So I feel like the 90% is something that I would like to have in hand so that I know how much money we need to ask the town for to build the school that we have.
Okay.
So I liked Terry's idea about going with the 90%. And what I'm hearing is that there are some risks with that, which is we've got maybe some delays that makes it more expensive. Now I'm hearing another risk that we're going to have designers that have nothing to do.
Well, no, I don't think we have to. It's not our obligation to have designers that, you know, if we have designers that it's.
Then what's, what's Lorraine?
What we have is if we don't want to delay the project, we have the alternative of asking them to continue to design at risk.
I think that, as Dawn pointed out, the designers would have to design to 90% in order to get a 90%.
Exactly.
The estimate.
That was a good point. Okay, so why can't we just go with the 90%?
Exactly.
So then this is what the, so that's what the schedule looks like.
So then, then why did we get derailed from this schedule?
Yeah, what's the problem with this schedule?
That's what I.
Well, I was actually asking that question to our chairs and others. Is there any negative impact of doing this other than just having the designers go at risk another month?
Well, you can explain it better than me, but I'm going to give it a shot. We would have to change our agreement with the designers. They would be free from any, I don't even know what the language is, but.
Liability.
Liability. Because they're going to be now designing a building more than what the town of Concord has said they're budgeting for that building until the town of Concord says, we'll pay more for this building. So there's language in their contract that holds them to the budget that the town of Concord has already voted for.
Could they build to the 60% at that point?
Again, it's going to still be above their authorized budget, probably. In other words, if the 60% estimate comes in and it's above 102.8,
Right.
Their obligation or their contract is to cut scope until they get back to the 102.8 based upon that estimate. That's what the current contract says.
100% certainty that it's going to come in over 102.8.
Yeah, see, so the thing is, that's what we're sitting, looking at.
So we can't say that when the 60% comes in, start designing to the 60% number or start telling us what that would cost so that we can do value engineering against that? I mean.
I think that what we already kind of, okay, so we're narrowed down to, I think, is a 1.5 million worth of remaining value engineering items that are on the table.
Right.
So there's not a whole lot more to go after. Is, you know, unless we're willing to really, as Ian already showed, change the underlying assumptions of, okay, no longer net zero, no longer does it have, you know, a gym that with two basketball courts, no longer does it have a 420 seat auditorium? I mean, those are the kinds of things that would have to change. So, and, you know, I'm, I'm not a betting man, but if I was in special town meeting and was trying to cut those things, I think that there is a big constituency that would be getting them back in, so.
So just to clarify, the designers are designing, the town's taking a risk, not starting from January 6th when the 90% comes in, but starting at the 60% or starting now even.
Yes, starting.
Yep, so just for clarity, contractually, at design development, we were over budget. Those are the numbers that you saw, the original.
We're already at risk now.
We're already at risk, but our committee said to the designers, at what point can we work together? If you need to make major scope changes, do we need to make those decisions? And they said 60% CDs. So we said, great, we will work through a value management process in parallel, proceed to 60% to get us there. Does that make sense? So that allows them to keep working
Right.
and us to make decisions to try and get us closer in line.
And so we're about four weeks away.
Why couldn't you make that to 90%?
They can't make the changes at 90%. It's too late to like take an auditorium out of the building at 90%. At 90%, you're drawing like waterproofing details. You're not like laying out the building. That's a, those things happen. There's so many engineering coordination and details. At 90%, it's too late to make those major changes. So that's why they said.
It's the reason it's called 90%.
Yeah. Yeah, you can almost build a building up at 90%. A CM would, a general contractor wouldn't. But, so they're pretty far along at that point.
Okay.
This is getting way too complicated. And it's all, all the complication is based on fuzzy information about what people will do or might do and so many pieces and so many, so much involved and things that are assumed as givens but can be altered if you have to work to an objective. And I think at this point, we are working toward a cost objective. And I think then, because the rest of it is much too complicated.
Henry, can you just say more to me about what fuzzy? What's, I mean, I understand, I mean, there's a lot of fuzziness about what the citizens of Concord might want to do.
The fuzziness is what the different designers will do and what their contract says and how much time they need to do this or that and whether those things are their preference or those are requirements. You know, all those things are, you know, just assumptions that are being made about how people are going to work. And there are a lot of pieces in this. And I think it's too hard for me to understand. I don't know.
May I offer, may I try? May I try and ask?
Please, Lorraine.
And they're trying to explain it more, just makes it more complicated and more fuzzy. I think that you have to concentrate on what the real issue is here. And the real issue is what is it going to cost? And we can control what it costs because.
Well, we can partially control what it costs. We can't control what it costs. And we can't know the answer.
We can control what it costs because we can say we will not authorize more than X dollars.
We, our committee voted to ask you for 115, 115 not to exceed. Does that provide any clarity, right?
It does if that is, there's an ironclad commitment that there will be no. It does if that is, there's an ironclad commitment that there will be no further requests.
I'm not sure our committee, I mean, I'm not sure our committee would have voted to do that if we didn't feel like that was a point at which we felt we would lose the community's support.
Well, if that comes, if you can give us that number and it comes with a commitment, that's, that is the end, I think then we can start talking.
I just think that we have already seen, I think, in an earlier agenda item, even though it wasn't present, that those kinds of commitments are very difficult to enforce, right? Because there are any number of things that, that can happen. I mean, you're going to have hyperinflation, right? This 8% inflation could be just the start, right? So we don't know.
But if you have, if those things happen, you may decide you don't want to do it.
That's true. That's always an option.
Eventually, it gets to cost, if it gets to cost more than you can afford to pay for, you say, we're not going to do it.
Well, and in fact, no further authorization is possible without the town's approval. So even if, if the 115 doesn't ultimately make it enough to do the project, guess what? You could ask for more money, but you have to get the town's approval to get that money. So it's not as though, you know, forestalling, the committee asking for more money doesn't change the result.
What happens when it's 115, then they say, well, we only need like 3 million more.
But it sounds like you're afraid that the town will decide something. And that the whole point of democracy is that the town should be given the opportunity to decide something. If they decide that it needs to be 118 in the end, that's what Concord has decided.
But I think once you break ground.
How many people attended the town meeting in, in January that voted?
But, are, are, okay, we can have a discussion about towns, the town's form of government, but we have a form of government. We have a way that we make budgetary decisions.
And that's not fuzzy. And that's not fuzzy at all, the way the town makes its decisions and what the rules and regulations are that guide that process. Nor is it fuzzy what the contract is with the architects. That's not fuzzy. And how buildings get built and how architects work is not fuzzy. So I, I just have to take exception to that, Henry. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude, but it just, it's hard to hear that. We've been dealing with this for so long. There are very hard facts that are in front of us. But the biggest fact is many unknowns about the economy and inflation. That is what got us here.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I just want, I think we do need a special town meeting. I don't think we need, we can wait. I think we need a special town meeting. And I really do appreciate that we have serious inflationary. And I would be willing to just trust that the building committee and the architects know the right timetable to make this work together. But I, the thing that's holding me back is that I'm not sure there's a real appreciation for the burden that we're expecting the taxpayers to bear. I'm not sure that's really being heard. I'm not sure that we're really aware of the fact that what this is going to cost the people in town who aren't, don't have kids in the school, who are the majority of the people, and how much we're asking them to give up, or how much we're asking them to spend. And I personally, I don't hear, I don't feel that that's being heard. So that's why, that's what, that's what makes me want to understand everything, get it exactly right. And I can't. Okay? But if I heard that people were really seriously thinking about what are we asking for the town, what are we asking for the people in town, what are we asking them to pay? And their costs are going up. Okay? All of the, all those citizens' costs are going up, and their investments aren't performing the way they thought. And most people don't have kids in the school. And if I thought that was being heard, and if I thought that you, that there was an understanding of all the things we're giving up if we have to spend 15 million more, how much we're giving up, and I've said this before, affordable housing, transportation, open space, we heard people tonight asking for a million dollars for affordable housing.
Well, the single largest line item is teacher salaries. Right?
Okay.
I mean, that's what we could trade off in the end.
So before we go there.
Mary, if I could, if I could just. That's what I'm saying.
You're asking to hear that. And, and I think that were you at every middle school building committee, what you would have heard is there were people on the committee who were really pushing, who feel very strongly about keeping the costs down. And we did listen to that. And we did, we did at the very outset, start to cut. We cut 1.3 million before we even got to, to these estimates that are so high. So we, we did take that seriously. And I think we do take it seriously. I, I take it seriously. I take it very seriously. But we also heard from a community that asked us to do certain things at this school to benefit the whole community.
Well, we'll find out at the.
But I, you know, I don't know if I can convince you of that.
I think that that's the thing, is that we need to, so, so far, we've only heard from the school building committee.
Exactly.
Right? So once we start this process, now we have a finance committee hearing. We have finance committee meetings talking about this process. I think we have other bodies now that will start to get involved, right? Because up until now, it's really been just the building committee's proposal.
Right.
So I think that this, starting this process, kind of could open that discussion.
I hope so.
I think, Mary, that was beautifully said. And maybe we could hear a little later from Peggy Bricks, who's here, about, you know, what the finance committee will do to hear about it. But I think, I think I'm, I'm ready to vote. And, and I want to propose a motion that we do call a special town meeting, and that we go with the schedule that's up, up on the board right now, because I really do think we need enough time for debate.
What is that date?
That, that is a.
So it shows a special town meeting at a date of the 13th of January, and a townwide vote of 3rd of February. I don't think we have to call the townwide vote at this point.
Right, right. Maybe it can be tightened up a tiny bit even, and it could be a couple of days earlier. But, but yeah, the 13th of January. I really don't think December is a really good month to have a special town meeting anyway. I think people are really distracted. So I would like to make a motion that we call the special with this calendar, with the 13th of January being the special town meeting.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about that? So we're talking about at the 60% design phase, right?
90%.
It's when the special town meeting would be held.
I'm having difficulty reading this. Okay, and so is it?
60% estimate would be reconciled estimate would be received, shared with the middle school building committee on the 6th of January is the current schedule. And the special town meeting would be a week later.
This is without any conditions or preconditions to, to hold, to calling that meeting, other than just pick the date.
And is this the one that you said that?
Well, and it should have the best, not the best.
So here's what I would like to do from a discussion point of view. If we go with this schedule.
Yeah.
We don't have to finalize the schedule tonight. So since this has not been vetted with the town moderator or with town staff, these precise dates.
Right.
What I would like to do is amend your motion so that we, we agree to have a special town meeting with the objective of having the special town meeting after the 90% reconciled estimate is received.
As soon as possible after the, right.
Well, I, I think a week is good.
Okay, but let's, let's staff decide.
Give me a little time to digest that would be better, I think, than having it the next day.
No.
But I.
No, no, well, yeah, but maybe two or three days, four days.
To be able to create motions, you know, and, okay, so, so in other words, so, so then we direct town staff and the town moderator to, you know, help us come to a decision. Because then we have time.
Right. And we can incorporate conditions, Henry, that you.
I think we need the select board then to give direction to the building committee to instruct the architects to continue to design to the 90% without penalty, or whatever the language is, to change their contract so that they have no liability.
Could, could we come back at our next meeting with specific language for that? Because I, I think that that has a certain amount of legal, I mean, maybe not legal force, but it's a contractual set of terms. So I'd like to not be vague about it. We have time. We're not at the 60% estimate yet. Can we come back next time, just with a, we'll have a firm schedule, and we'll have a, a firm wording. But yeah, I think we could take that on board as a.
So can we have a commitment from the select board that they will be asking the, the building committee to instruct the architects to continue to design without liability? That fundamentally, you're going to be, I don't care, I mean, I do care what the language looks like, and I don't expect you to come up with the language.
Without liability, you mean about, without the.
To have to redesign to.
The redesign clause, basically, to waive the redesign clause.
And Lorraine and town council and everyone, they can work through the language.
May I just ask a clarifying question about that? If we picked one of the other special town meeting schedules, wouldn't we have to give that same commitment anyway? Because after October 19th, no matter, no matter which schedule we pick, right?
Or we tell them to go to option C.
Well, doesn't the town manager have the authority? To, you're, you're the contract owner. You, you have the authority to waive a term in the contract. I mean, you may be still looking for our corrective, but.
That is my understanding, but I, that's, this is not something I've discussed with town council.
Yeah.
And so I would want to do that.
So I think, we should come back next time with that one. I, I think.
Okay, can I ask one more thing? Eventually, the select board is going to have to decide what we want to recommend at special town meeting.
And that's a whole separate discussion.
That's a whole separate thing. But to prep for that, I'm wondering if we could get a schedule of the value engineering thing, the progress towards value engineering, or something written. Could we do that?
Yes, I think that we could make that a third action item for next time.
That would influence my.
When you say schedule, can you clarify?
The list with the.
Oh, it's a list. Okay, I'm sorry.
A list of things that you've considered, where the, yeah, I'd like to really see.
Yeah, but with amounts, and I think with dates, right? Because there were sort of, now there's like three tranches here of, of value engineering.
And can I request?
To have the select board weigh in on those, those decisions?
No, what it is, is, my hope is, well, eventually, the select board will have to decide what we want to recommend on whatever the warrant article asks for. And, and that would influence my decision. So I'm asking that for, for me.
So I think to understand how serious the value engineering is.
Yes, the progress that's being made for value engineering.
And that's available on the website now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all available on the website. Yeah, you should be able to just go to the web. You could go home tonight and find out what you've been doing.
So next, we, next. Actually, I'm asking you to bring it because I really have a lot of things to do.
Okay, so, so we have a meeting in two weeks from now, three items. So first of all, do we want to just have a motion to, about calling a special town meeting?
Can I ask one more thing? Before we go to that, Lorraine, is there anything that you want to add to this discussion from, you know, because you're employed by us and we're making a decision about the work you're going to do?
So I think this is a, you know, it's a difficult conversation, and I can accept that it might be confusing. I mean, the big picture here is that we have a project that was on budget. And due to unforeseen circumstances in the industry, we are over that budget. The committee has spent hours looking at VE options, I will say, in some instances, competing interests, to understand what can be removed from that project to bring it back on budget. But without removing significant scope that your voters voted on, we have not been able to bring that back on budget. So I think one of the challenges for us is that we need to continue advancing the documents. And a difficult part of that is how do you continue advancing the documents when you're continually advancing the discussion of VE as well? So at some point, Pat, we have to draw that line in the sand and say, we cannot continue VE-ing everything and completing the documents. So the, the discussion about special town meeting is, we're not going to get there by just VE-ing. And the commitment to make a special town meeting is a difficult one. I understand that. I'm a taxpayer in my own community. I understand what it means to be a taxpayer for school projects. But at some point, you know, when that decision is made, and if you make that, you made a motion, but you haven't made a vote. But if you make that vote, you know, there needs to be a discussion about where we've, you know, when we stop VE-ing so that we can complete the documents.
Okay, Superintendent Hunter.
Thank you. There are just a couple of comments I want to make on the timeline and the process. One is, I think it's important we bring you an impact to the overall schedule if we were to go with this when we come back in two weeks. I think too, as someone who's now, this would be my third town meeting on this project, presenting, generalizing and socializing the information. There's just questions and concerns I have there because you're going to have to put a number forward in the October, November timeframe to socialize with the community. You can't go above that number anyway. When you get to 90% and have to turn that around in January, which I think looks really aggressive to get a number January 6th, and turn a town meeting set of information around in that amount of time, it's, you're already going to have had to put a number out prior to that. So I just think there's a, a, a process we want to talk through before you formally commit to this. I personally, as someone who gets asked when numbers change, by the time we get to town meeting, I think that's a lot to explain. Look at how difficult it's been tonight. I would personally be much more comfortable to, to execute the process at 60%. You can't go above that anyway, because you've got to put the warrant out prior to the 90%, even with this timeline. So I just want to be sure we're weighing pros and cons of what feels more comfortable versus what in logistical fashion of the process may or may not gain you what you're hoping for. All of us would sit here saying, this is unfortunate that we're here. We've spent, I don't know, three hours a week for months now trying to bring this number down. No one is, we are very concerned about the impact to the taxpayer. We pushed really hard to get what we wanted in the building for the price we brought you in January, thinking we had hit that middle as best we could. We're devastated that we're having this conversation. And the only thing giving me comfort is that all my colleagues are having this conversation to the point where MSBA is trying to solicit and facilitate it. I got an email from the superintendents association to try to lobby the legislators to give us some relief on these unknown costs. Gotten Dunstal voted another $9 million on their project last week. They did it quickly because they were afraid of all the variables we just talked about. So I, I think if we can come back in two weeks and be really thoughtful and answer all these questions for all of us, not just all of you, but all of us, I think that would be very valuable.
I'm not sure if I caught something that you said correctly. Were you implying that this schedule would delay the project?
It could.
How? Because I, I thought I had heard up until now in tonight's discussion that all of these, as long as there was relief for the architect from that, that redesign clause would achieve, you know, would not impact the schedule.
I, I want to confirm that. So let's let Hill and S M M know where that.
Well, because if this isn't feasible from, you know, it's a project delay, next meeting is, for us, is the meeting where we would have to authorize. So I, I'm a little concerned by what you just said.
Ian, do you have that up?
I mean, you still have to complete the 100% construction documents. So there's 26 days in the schedule to do that. So.
I mean, are you, I mean, again, are you implying that, that design would halt at some point here? I don't, I didn't anticipate that.
The start rate now for 100% CDs is January 17th, to start 100% CDs.
Yeah.
Which would take us through February 22nd to complete that.
Right. So again, is there any material difference if there, if the redesign clause is waived between this and this?
You're, you're proceeding based off of the special town meeting?
Not the vote, he's asking.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
If you're proceeding, if, if you have a budget.
Well, it's the same thing. It's still all at risk.
Locked, locked in place on January 13th, then you can proceed with 100% design, and it does not impact the schedule. But you can't go any further than that.
Go to the 90? It's February. So yeah, so that's the, yes.
Yeah. So, so if it's based on the, the townwide vote on the 3rd, then you are impacting the schedule. But if it's based.
Well, three weeks.
Three weeks, 21 days. Yeah, so that's the, what Ian's pointing out is here, you'd assume special town meeting, you're still telling them to go into 100%. If you go back to the 60, two tabs back, it proceeds off of the actual vote. So you're actually, you're, you've, at this point, on this scenario, you've been through special town meeting and the vote, so the ballot, so you know it's, it's a go if it passes, or it's a no-go if it doesn't. In the other one, you're in limbo between special town meeting, which you need two thirds, right? And the ballot, which you need a simple majority?
I guess the question I have is that we've been in, in this approach, we would have been in limbo since October. I guess the question I have is that we've been in, in this approach, we would have been in limbo since October 20th anyway.
Right.
So why not keep on limbo-ing for another three weeks?
Your back will hurt.
I guess, I don't understand what the difference is.
Well, you'll be asking the architects to, to design fundamentally the build, the whole building. You won't have, if we knew earlier that the town was not going to go above a certain number. If we, if we had that number, then we would know, we have to take out the auditorium, bigger auditorium, we have to take out the bigger gymnasium, or we have to, we have to get a, I don't know, you get a waiver for the net zero design, I mean, we know more of what we have to take out, so the architects could be designing that building.
Yeah, but we're already kind of past that threshold. We're not going to get to a special town meeting before we're already at the threshold of designing at risk.
Okay.
What, no matter what, I mean, even if we just right now just suddenly said, well, let's, let's open the warrant. I, I see Peggy Briggs.
The dollar amount of the design expense for the architects between 60 and 90%.
So what is the, so that is the, since you're not at a mic, what is the dollar amount of the design expense for the architects between 60 and 90%?
They're looking at me, Lorraine, but it's your contract, I don't know what your monthly
That's another one.
Yes, so between 60 and 90 is roughly 1.2. And between 90 and 100 is another 680.
Okay. 1.2 million to get from the 60 to 90% design and 680,000 to go from the 90% design to 100%. So those would be the amounts that, that we're putting at risk. At minimum, actually, I mean, there's still redesign, there's all kinds of other things, but just to say that, hey, we're already going to be at risk for 1.2, why not 2? I mean, you know, it's only money, no, it is, it's serious money, it's serious money, I mean, it, it's just, yeah. So, do we have, so back to, it's been 10 minutes now since the, the, the other thing that I, I agreed to do, by the way, before we ended this item was to take some public comment, because this is a high interest item. And I don't know if there's anyone in the room, what I would like to note is that we received over 50 letters, many of which are included in our packet. And I would say that some themes are, have already been very well socialized. So I would recommend that if anyone did have public comment, that they make the public comment on a new or, or different point than what we have heard through all of that correspondence and through tonight's discussion. So I see one person for public comment online. And also, if you, if you're in person, please come to the four people that are in person, get priority. So please come, introduce yourself, your name and address, and make your comment.
Hello, my name's Yumi Suarez, I live at 45 Oxbow. And I sent a letter, which I think some of the themes have been socialized. But as someone who's observed the middle school committee meetings, I've gone to the last number of them. And sometimes I have to log off because they start at 7:30 and I have a 9 or 9:30 meeting. But they stay on and they have meticulously gone through every possible value engineering option. I mean, some of these debates, you know, are, are very in-depth. So I just want to let you know, as an observer, like, I feel like I can start commenting on some of these discussions they're having and they are taking these very seriously. Like, line by line, and actually, they go, they go over them multiple, multiple times. So I know that you're going to see the list and it's just going to look like a list in yes or no. But I want you to know that between, you know, behind every yes or no question, there's been like hours of discussion around it. And I would say a lot of it centers, I think the core question is around, how does this support the educational plan? I mean, they're, they really want to make sure they're debating that, because that is what, you know, we as citizens voted on. We voted on a design that's going to have a certain, you know, offer a certain educational plan. And they debate that, but they also look at things like, if we choose this tile, well, sure, we're saving this much money, but it needs to be replaced every three years instead of every 10 years. So they are, I just want to assure you that I know they take their financial responsibility very seriously. And I also say, I'm very impressed by the professionals that have joined us on this project. You know, that we put it out for a bid. And I would say that it's always hard to have someone on the committee that actually does your job, right? And so Dawn is an architect and what she does is work on schools. And so I think oftentimes that can be a challenging dynamic in some cases that I've seen. But in fact, I think, you know, they have every answer for her, they've worked in really great collaboration. And so, you know, I agree in terms of trusting our professionals and trusting this committee. Because I feel like I know how all of this works just from the last couple of meetings. And it is complicated, but, you know, they've done a great job kind of educating all of us who've been part of this process. So I just wanted to speak on the hours and hours that I haven't even seen. But the ones I have seen, they've definitely kept cost in mind and they tried to make every effort to have that hard balance of keeping the educational plan that we all voted for, while also looking at the tax burden for Concord citizens, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, other members of the audience.
Wilson Kerr, 20 Damon Street in Concord. I'd like to, I think Mary absolutely nailed it, you know, she said, I want to move forward with this, but I also want to trust these professionals, these people that have spent, I think, 16 hours was the, is just the recent estimate of time they've spent pounding through this. This is a volunteer group. Pat is a volunteer, she chairs this, they've been working on this for three years. So Mary nailed it, but what Mary is looking for is, well, wait a second, what about the, the impact to the town? Hearing all this at this meeting in a vacuum, and Henry, you're saying, I, I just don't get it, I don't get it. This vote was 474 to 2270. It was a landslide in February. This town wants a new school. The cost per square foot is under most of the other towns. I have a, a, a summer place on the Vineyard, a family little cabin there. Their school estimate came in 50% over. We are, our building estimate is 7% under, over. And the value engineering to cut this, this, you know, roughly 2 million that they've done has been blood, sweat and tears. The town, uh, special, the town special meeting that happened in February, I don't know what the vote was, 600 to 5 or something? It was a landslide. I urge you to see this in the context of what the town wants. It is expensive to continue with the old school, someone talked about the operational costs being brought in. We have already litigated this, we've already decided what school we want. We didn't vote for a number, we voted for a beautiful school that hits an education plan that Lori needs for her educators. This rising tide will raise all the boats. It will cost money, everything costs money. But having a town with a dilapidated middle school, with rusty lead pipes and asbestos in the ceiling and two campuses and $50,000 a year in busing is also a failure. So I urge this committee, and I also want to commend Matt, he is not only here today, but he has been at every single one of these meetings. He's explaining it very well. Move forward with the town meeting, do it expeditiously, but understand, even though you say the majority of people don't have kids in the school, there is a very, very interested body of parents, of, of taxpayers who understand the value that this school will bring to the town. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience, yes?
Thank you, Peggy Briggs, Chair of the Finance Committee. Speaking as chair and certainly not on behalf of my members. I just want to confirm the numbers that are floating around. We have a meeting this Thursday. And the numbers I current, I took notes, the numbers that I am looking at is our current, we voted on 103.7 million?
2.8.
102.8, thank you, 102.8. And our current value engineered number is 106.5?
Yes, with some pending possibility.
With a possibility of 1.2 still.
That Thursday morning, I think we will dispatch on Thursday morning.
You may have wet ink on, for your meeting on Thursday night.
Okay, because we, and I, I, speaking on behalf of, uh, some of the members of our committee, I do think they're, would appreciate the 90% alternative on the, the schedule that you're looking at. I think that, that's a great alternative. And the final thing is, I think we will be asking town staff to calculate that tax impact. So going from the 102.8 to the 106.5, we should be able to get that number, I, I think, from Bob pretty easily.
I think it's already done.
Is, also, is there an aspect of that? I mean, with the T bill now at 3.5%, I would assume that the town is not able to get money at 4%.
Yeah, I think we're
I wonder if we have to change that assumption as well.
Last time we did it, we did it at, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, 4% interest, 25 years with a fixed flat payment schedule, because there's, you know, some variables that you'll ultimately have to decide, but that can give us the number for, you know, it now looks like, you know, barely, less than 4 million is an increase in the price, right? 102.8 to 106.5?
Well, I think that this process is that it unlikely, it's unlikely that the motion would just be for an additional 4 million. It's my, my guess, because first of all, I mean, we haven't seen these other estimates, so we're, we're certainly gonna try. I mean, we would have, we would ultimately be able to put a motion in that, that, I think that one correction I think I'd have to make to Mr. Kerr's statement was that I don't believe it was the estimates were 50% off, it was the bids.
That's right.
So you still need a bidding contingency, I believe, on any number that we have with a 90% estimate. So I'm just saying, yeah.
Understood, and I think to Henry's point, coming in with a worst case scenario, which I think the 115
We hope.
I mean, the only two things we know are the 102.8 and the designated building. I mean, everything else is up to next year, the special town.
Up to special town meeting, that's right.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I had my notes correct and we'll be discussing this and the Christopher Heights project.
Okay.
Thursday.
All right.
Have fun.
Is this remote?
Okay, so
It'll be, I know, it will be in person and it'll be hybrid.
Thank you, so I see Mark Galis online, and I think that will be our last com, public comment, so before we go through.
It's, it's Tanya this time, it was Mark earlier. I, I want to say that I, I also have a lot of faith in the middle school building committee's process and, and that I favor an early warrant. Thank you for changing my name, I couldn't do it on my computer. I just have another comment about what Henry brought up as a potential issue about asking more money each time or in little increments. And I think, I think that, I don't think he was, he was criticizing our town government form or not understanding it. I think he was highlighting a larger general problem where these things do happen. It might not happen with the school committee, I have faith in, in that, but, so I think, I think it's, it's, it's also fair to thank Henry for, for highlighting an issue that does come, does, does happen frequently in different matters in town. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and for the record, it's 62 Prescott Road, I believe. Okay, so
That's correct.
So should we restate our motion?
Okay. Moved that the select board calls special town meeting for the 13th of January 2023.
Do we want to set that date certain?
I thought we were going to have staff then put all the other dates around it.
Are we all right, moderator?
You know, the, the schedule that you put together looks basically okay, but you know, there's an awful lot of staff impact in there. And it seems pretty important to run it by them and look at the holidays and so forth to make sure that, in fact, that's going to work. Normally, we have a lot more time to vet a calendar before you vote on it.
So what would be our motion then for tonight if we were not to set a certain date?
Do you want us, Carmen, to just say something like, um, early January? Or do you want us to set a date for the special town meeting and then have staff put all the other dates in?
Or, I, I thought that the motion was going to be that we are resolved to call a special town meeting built around a schedule that would have the 90% estimate in hand before the meeting?
That's fine, I'm happy, whatever.
You know, I mean, again, that's, we will still have to devote a calendar, okay?
Right, okay, why don't we just do that then?
Is that, is that okay? I mean, I don't know, it doesn't really carry that much force as a motion, I should say.
Right, I'm not sure you really, I mean, the consensus of the board clearly is that you're gonna call a special town meeting. You're not opening the warrant tonight, you're not voting on the calendar.
So is that, can we get a consensus of the board then?
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes, and I, I won't be at the next meeting, but yeah, that's my preference rather than having it in December.
And then Henry, you are not in favor. Okay, but we do have a good majority here that's willing to pursue that plan. So we do have some action items for folks, again, for town staff to get more formal
Are we back here?
Calendar.
At the next meeting?
You know, I think, I don't believe that we're going to have the, the length of deliberations that we had tonight. I mean, in other words, hopefully, we will get the information we need, we will vote, we'll have all the, all the action next time, but I don't think we'll have a lot of talk.
Okay, what is the date of that?
So you might have a representative would be good.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I just, is there, it's two weeks?
October 3rd.
3rd, okay, thank you.
But we'll try to be expeditious. Okay, I think then that takes care of it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, so, back to our agenda. We're a little over time, just a little. Why don't we table the draft correspondence policy?
That'd be great, because I don't think we need one.
Okay, well, that is, that's worthy of discussion. So let's table that until, until future meeting.
Can't we do that quickly?
Well, I do have a couple of suggested amendments.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind.
How about this?
How about this?
People, send me your proposed amendments.
Yep.
Send your amendments to me, your proposed amendments to the draft correspondence policy, if you have any. And I, I will compile them and share back it, I will put it in the, in the packet for next time.
Great, I only have one separate one.
So we've tabled two items this evening?
We have, we've kicked the can down the road.
What was the other one?
The, the housing production plan. Okay, so, that's all right, these are big, big items. The, uh, next is the early voting hours, we do need to approve that, we ready for that?
Yes.
Okay.
You've got the town clerk on.
Uh, yeah, please, if you're, please mute yourself online, thank you.
I moved to approve the early voting hours for the November 4th general election as written in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no committee nominations and for appointments, we have Eve Eisenberg, 833 Old Road to North Old Road to New England Corner, to the Concord Preservation Community Preservation Community Preservation Committee, expiring May 31st, 2023. And Carleen Hempel of 50 Highland Street, as the Town Representative to the River Stewardship Council, expiring September 18th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have any liaison reports?
Oh my gosh.
So I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead, I mean, just a couple of brief comments.
Yeah, a couple of us attended the Housing Production Plan Forum, which I think
which I think went well and there'll be material posted. And I think it's addressed in the op report that we received. And then this afternoon, a couple of us were at the, what's it called, Mary? The Personnel Study Task Force. Yes, I was.
Oh, you were.
Yes, I was. And, you know, it was informative in terms of what was still on people's minds who did come in. And I think we'll hear more about that in the report that's coming to us pretty quickly.
Okay, great. I mean, I, by the way, I didn't get through the whole report, but one of the things I noted was, one of the key things from the charge was appendix R. And so I thought, well, since it was so key to the charge, it shouldn't be appendix R. I think it should be, you know, in the body of the report, seems to me. I don't know.
And if I could just make one other comment because I don't know, there's no other place for me to make the comment. You know, I, I always appreciate the thoughtful deliberations that we all go through, but as you already noted, it's pretty difficult to sit here tonight and hear about the willingness to, you know, consider additional money to support a project that we think is extremely important. And pay, and, and the request that we had tonight pales in concern, in, in contrast to what we're talking about for the middle school. So I just want to, you know, I, I say that appreciating that, you know, it's all of us deliberating together, but we do have multiple needs in this town. That, and, and that when we're talking about the assisted living project in particular, it does meet some DEI requirements. It does meet economic development and vitality requirements. That's why we approved a TIF because of the 30 additional employees and so forth. So, you know, I, I just feel the need to say that and thank you for letting me do that.
Okay, next liaison, any?
Yeah, I do, I have quite a few, actually. First of all, the DPW Commission met. They went over the draft, the planning board put together a draft for the implementation of the Scenic Roads Bylaw. Remember that passed at town meeting? So the planning board has put together how they're, a draft of how they're going to implement that. And the DPW was making edits on that. And there's a little bit of tension there still. The DPW also talked about their capital budget. They're starting to think about their capital budget going forward, their five-year plan. And there seems to be a little bit, it seems like there's a lot of needs on the horizon for transportation. And I'm not sure they found a home yet as far as investments we would need to make for transportation, whether it's in DPW or there's another line item. So that was just brought up briefly. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Terry and I went to the ribbon cutting for the visitor center the other day. It was really, it was fun.
And Henry was there?
And Henry was there, that's right, Henry was there. And then Terry and I went back later and did the trolley ride for the.
Right, we got the brochure.
So there's some, still some startup problems with the trolley, but. But anyway, the other thing is I went to the CMLB board, the CMLB, and they were talking about potential rate increases for 2023, which shouldn't come as a surprise to us because everything's going up. In 2022, we've, they already passed something to cover the increases in power costs for 2022, but we might see another increase in 2023. And they also had an article, a discussion about Article 38. If you remember, Article 38 was sponsored by Dean Banfield. It was looking at generating more solar capacity on town-owned lands. I'll have to say that at the meeting, I came away from the meeting thinking that, well, this is a lot more complicated than I thought. This is going to take more time. I'm pretty sure they're going to come in and ask for an extension. But then later, I was pointed in the direction of a lot of reports and studies that have already been done. So a lot of the groundwork has already been laid. So people are impatient for implementation, hence the, the warrant article to begin with. So again, they're going to come in, hopefully, with a written outline on their approach. I'm looking at some of the financials for the approach. But I, I realize that we've already been down this road before and it stalls, so let's hope that it doesn't stall this time.
I had one more that I forgot, sorry. Yesterday, I represented the Select Board at the Community Recognition for the Acquisition of the Astoria River Bluff. And it clearly was a feel-good event for everybody who was there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so just real quick, yeah, I was on the trolley with Mary and we waited almost two hours because we misread the brochure. And so we finally figured out, see, it's got all these times here, like, we thought it stopped in each of these places for that many minutes. So we were waiting at some of these places, but that's not what it's really doing. So it needs a little bit of clarification. But once we finally got on the trolley, the driver was really good and gave a lot of tour guide.
She had a lot of information.
Information. There were a few other riders, definitely needs more. So it's coming along. And I also attended a really, really good meeting of seven different towns at the Fowler Library about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And Carleen Hempel did a super job of facilitating and got all seven towns in an hour and a half to agree on all the same rules in, for every town on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and the same signs. We got all of that finished.
That's unbelievable.
There were 50 or 60, 50 or 60 people in the room and everybody agreed. It was amazing meeting.
She's a terrific facilitator.
Yeah, we'll be having some more meetings for some more topics.
Okay, Henry?
Time to go home.
Okay. I just had one, you've clearly heard all about the middle school building committee, but for the school committee, I just wanted to note that there was a lot of discussion of school travel programs restarting. So there are going to be trips to hither and yon. And then, secondly, the strategic planning process for the district is starting. And so I've been invited to some workshops and the strategic planning workshops. And so this will be going on until the spring. So those are the key updates.
Could that include a change in the allocation between the towns? It's for the district, you said, right?
Yeah, I don't know the scope. And so I, I haven't seen one of these before, so I don't know.
I mean, the agreement that's based on a rolling average.
Is this really looking at the agreement that we have?
No, I think it's more about the strategic.
Okay, so it's a vision.
Plan from an educational vision and the kind of campuses that we're going to have and all that stuff.
It's visioning.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not really looking at.
I mean, I don't know, I think there might be facility planning, there might be other, other things.
Okay.
Though you'd figure we're, we're at the conclusion of facility planning. Maybe not, but it seemed like it. Okay, so I think with no other business before us, it's time to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Hopefully, there's no other public comment.
Gosh, public comment. If there's, if there is public comment, please raise your hand. We already acknowledged all the correspondence we received this week.
Oh, and we need another clerk this time.
We received 50 this week?
Yes, we received, well, over the past two weeks.
Oh.
Since, since a week ago Thursday, we received 50 letters.
Okay, I don't see any hands up.
Okay, I don't see hands up. So now we can adjourn, thank you.
You gotta have a hand up, sorry.